Good evening. I'd like to welcome this very large crowd with lots of smiling faces to our August 18th, 2015 General School Board Meeting. Adequate notice was provided of this... Oh, I apologize. I'm always jumping the guns because I see all these smiling faces. Do I have a motion to close private session?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes or noes. Now, I will like to welcome everybody to the general meeting of Lacy Township Board of Education, August 18th, 2015. Adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press.
I can hear you up here.
Okay. Try to speak louder.
Yes.
I apologize. I almost want to stand so you can hear me. Okay. So adequate notice was given of this meeting on August 4th, 2015 by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Law. Will you please all join me in a salute to our class?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have an agenda, we're now paging to check to page 21. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a motion that the board approved the minutes of the agenda meeting held on July 20th, 2015?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSensay.
No.
Mr. Jared Downe.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Stain.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes. Do I have a motion that the board approved the minutes and appropriate attachments of the regular meeting held on July 20th, 2015? Do I have a motion? Is there a second? I apologize for the confusion. We had a lot of people absent last meeting. So I will second that motion. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSensay.
No.
Mr. Jared Downe.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Stain.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes. Do I have a motion that the board approved the minutes and appropriate attachments of the regular meeting held on July 20th, 2015? Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Is there a second? We had a lot of people absent last meeting. So I will second that motion. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSensay.
No.
Mr. Jared Downe.
Stain.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Stain.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes. Motion failed.
No. Well, it's a motion to adopt minutes, so it rules a different time. I think it's a satisfactory motion.
In regard to...
I can agree.
Okay. So, does the board move... I need a motion actually for the board to approve the minutes of the private session held on July 20th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Move.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSensay.
No.
Mr. Jared Downe.
Stain.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Stain.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell, I want to make a correction.
Yes.
The original motion, the first motion that you stated...
Yes.
I need to abstain from that vote.
And that was the agenda meeting.
I need to abstain from every vote from July 20th.
Right, because you were on business.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. In regard to... May I just come a moment? We have... Over the summer, we've had a lot of absences. In regard to the July 13th, 2015 special meeting, Mrs. McAvoy, who was not able to attend tonight, and Mr. Bidwell, who unfortunately suffered a death in his family, so at the last minute, he wasn't able to attend tonight. They were both at that meeting. They're not present tonight, so I'm asking for a motion to table the special meeting, approving the minutes of the special meeting on July 13th, 2015. Do I have a motion to table that?
So both of them present in trouble?
Yes, both of them, but I think we'll have to take a vote separate.
You can take a vote.
Okay. So I'm asking for both of those.
I'll move to...
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSensay.
Yes.
Mr. Jared Downe.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes. Thank you. Now we are turning to page 38 in regards to paying of the bills. So I have a motion to approve the payment in the bills totaling $4,389,524.14.
I'll move that.
Do I have a second? I'll second that. Roll call.
Mrs. DeSensay.
Yes, on all bills except item 95307 now, item 953069, item number 260527, item number 953013, item number 953014, item 953035, and I'm passing down the list.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Jared Downe.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
No.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes.
Excuse me. Is there a chance that we could know what they relate to? I don't have the... I know when I think it's over a vote, just...
Right. And actually...
Do they have agendas?
There are.
There's one right outside the door.
Let me see if there's another agenda out there. Mr. Leidl will check.
And I apologize. The agendas, they're photocopied and they're sitting out front. We may... I hope we didn't run out. Oh, there's some!
There they are.
Take one passing around. I am not giving one.
You really feel like you're back at school now, don't you?
I share with your neighbor, there's not enough for everybody.
Raise your hand. Raise your hand? Oh my. Two, four. You know, that's something. Okay. And to let you know that in the minutes, all votes are recorded. So when you look at the minutes from the last meeting, it records all the votes of the board members. And moving forward, you can then understand how each board member voted. Do I have a motion through the adoption of this resolution? Read the Lacy Township...
Read.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSensay.
Yes.
Mr. Jared Downe.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Torrell.
Yes. At this time, we're now on page 39 of the agenda. Mr. Stein, is there an attorney report tonight?
Not additional with this group.
Thank you. I'll turn it over now to Dr. Anthony, our Superintendent of School.
Thank you, Mrs. Torrell. So at this time, it is my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Carly Miller, who is the SGA, Student Government Association Executive Board President, and Lindsay Dyckhoff, who also joins us here on the dais, who is the Senior Class President. And if you watch our meetings on Channel 21 or online, you know that...
I can hear you up here. Please, either turn up the audio or...
So we don't have... So we don't have audio here. What you could do, if you can hear, just raise your hand and we'll monitor that, okay? So we have two of our students with us today.
Wait, can you just...
There's empty seats down the bottom.
And I apologize. What she's trying to communicate, this...
They can't see her.
Unfortunately, we do not have microphones. There is a microphone only out for public comment. There are some seats down front that you'd like to move down. Don't you have handheld microphones?
Audio problems at the top, they can't...
Well, yes, there are. If I go any louder on this, it's on the radio. Radio, just feedback right now. You can try it, but it's gonna start feeding back pretty soon. Can you hear that in the tank? If people overhear, make sure that when you talk, you don't put paper or anything on this, because that'll start feeding back. But bring it closer to you and you should be able to...
Thanks.
You can hear the ringing, it's already starting, but I'm gonna leave it...
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Wow, okay. And we'll just make sure it gets moved in front of each person. Thank you.
All right. So then I'm going to start again. It is my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Carly Miller, who is the Student Government Association Executive Board President, and also Lindsay Dyckhoff, who is the Senior Class President for the high school here. And if you watch our board meetings online or on TV 21, you know that it is very important to this board and this administration that we include our students. And so it is a highlight for us when we get to spotlight their achievements and their accomplishments, and this is a very, very special part of our meeting. So I've asked Carly and Lindsay just to introduce themselves and give a brief welcome to the 2015-16 school year. And so why don't you give them a test too, so they can hear your voice and make sure, okay?
Hello?
Yes? All right, we're good.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Dyckhoff. I'm the president, Senior Class President.
Hi, I'm Carly Miller. I'm the Student Government President of the Executive Board.
We're just gonna say some stuff that we're doing this year. First is the One-to-One Initiative. All students in the school are gonna be getting Chromebooks. The distribution is August 24th to the 28th at 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. and 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Freshman orientation is Friday, September 4th, starts at 12:30 p.m. Freshmen follow their schedules and meet their teachers and go to their classes, see who's in their classes. Our pep rally is Tuesday, September 8th, which is our first day of school. It's outside on the football field. If it rains, we're inside the auditorium. And back to school night is Thursday, September 10th.
We will be holding a meeting for any freshmen interested in running for freshman elections on September 11th in W-108 after school. We have a new student breakfast on October 2nd, and that's where the new students mingle with the Student Government students, and they get to know new friends, so they don't walk into school without knowing anyone. And homecoming is Saturday, October 17th, and we are working on getting a new DJ, and tentative ticket sales are October 6th through 8th and October 13th through 15th in after school in W-108.
Thank you. I just wanted briefly say on behalf of the board, thank you ladies for taking a summer night to come out and join us. If you've never attended one of our school board meetings, this is a regular practice of Lacy Township, that the Senior Class President and the President of the Student Government Association sit here on the dais with us and bring information about the high school and to the community. So I just wanted to welcome both of you and thank you.
Thank you. That is an awesome warm welcome that you got, so I wish you very, very best this year. I also want to take a moment and mention that although we tried to hold off as well as we can to welcome our students and our staff back to school, it is near. And we are right now in the process of readying our classrooms for our teachers, who do come in well before their time required to set up their classrooms. Mr. Savage and I had an opportunity today to begin our tours as we do annually, and I must say, Mr. Savage, that the head custodial staff and the custodians and the maintenance crews, under your supervision and purview, have done an outstanding job. The schools are immaculate. We have had some renovations to the media center, and I want to commend all of the leaders on that process, which is really coming out very nicely. So I want to just inform the board that we are getting ready to begin all of our back to school communications with welcome back letters and back to school information and school supply lists, and so I will continue to keep the board informed as our progress begins. I also have asked Dr. Clark just to share with the board tonight where we are with the status of the technology plan, and so I'm going to ask you, Dr. Clark, to just briefly update the board on where we are with the One-to-One Program.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Anthony. Can everybody hear me? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. So last week, and I believe this evening, I believe the call went out at 7:30, an automated call was sent to parents as an invitation to attend an information session on Thursday, August 20th at 6:30 p.m. in the high school auditorium to provide students and parents an information session on our high school One-to-One Technology Program. Specifically, we will talk about the student Chromebook distribution schedule, which our two student representatives mentioned, and it is more than one day. So on Thursday, we're going to go over that distribution schedule, but we're also going to be talking about what is going to be going on on the pickup day. So it's not that students are just going to walk into the building, pick up their devices, and go home. Students and parents are going to have the opportunity to participate in an orientation session, where students will receive some instruction on how to log on. Mr. Leidl has created an introductory video, so the students are going to be watching that. Parents and students will also be going over the student... I'm sorry, the One-to-One Chromebook handbook, and then there will be an opportunity for questions and answers at the end of that session. So that's what we're gonna be talking about on Thursday. Information about that night will also be recorded, so that if there are parents and students that cannot attend on the 20th, they'll have the opportunity to watch the video. It'll be posted to both the district website and the high school website. And again, we encourage as many parents and students to come out on Thursday, as that is going to be our first information night about our One-to-One Technology Program. And I know that I can speak for Mr. Hanshu, who's in the audience tonight, that he's very excited to be embarking on this very amazing project. Thank you, Dr. Anthony, for the opportunity to talk about that night.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Clark. At this time, as the board knows, for the past few months, I have been inviting the donors of various donations that they have... Community members have generously given to the board. And so I send an RSVP every month, and I know that at least one person on our donor list is in attendance. Is there anyone else here? So I would just like to recognize to the board that we have a wonderful donation list tonight, and I know that Mr. Marine is here, and he would be donating and offering a student a flute, a music stand, and a recorder valued at $300. So I want to come over and congratulate you and thank you, rather thank you, for sharing with us. And I know that a student will be very, very happy to receive this donation. And if you wanted to say a few words to the board, you can all...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Hopefully, the gift will be well received. I'm sure it will. And I'd like to thank the board members here tonight, and to the teachers and coaches and administrators who guided my daughter to help make her successful. Coach Brewer is here, now Principal Brewer, who helped her swim, you know, championship times, and Coach Blom, and so many here. And this is a tough job. It's a lot of negativity and flack, but my experience here as a parent and someone who's been an ex-school teacher, was this board and this school system did a good job for my child. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to mention, thank you, Mr. Marine, that the donation from Mr. and Mrs. Housework in the amount of $5,000 has been instrumental in assisting us in the renovation of the media center that I referenced earlier. At this time, I would like to turn the board's attention to Ms. Ann Taylor, who is here for a presentation on the Myon Reading Program, and she is joined by Mrs. Kilmari, who was a lead teacher in this program this summer. So thank you for sharing your information expertise on behalf of the board, and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Well, welcome. I certainly wasn't expecting to present to so many new faces and lots of familiar faces out there. We're here to tell you about an internet-based program with a funny little name called Myon, but the impact just that we've seen with this program just over five weeks in the summer has gotten us really excited, and we're very happy to tell you about it. And we plan on continuing it with our Milpon School, the fifth and sixth grade school this year. First, I want to tell you a little bit about research related to independent reading and research related to reading over the summer. And this is not new research. If you look as far back in 1987, 1988, we were... It was discovered and proven that extra time spent reading independently has a significant impact on the literacy achievement of students. And it's the best predictor of vocabulary development and reading achievement gains. So looking at three different students and the amount of time that they spend reading independently daily has huge impact, has a huge impact on their achievement. Student A that spends 20 minutes a day, reads 3,600 minutes per year, 1,800,000 new words, and typically scores in the 90th percentile in reading achievement. Comparing that to student B and student C, that where they do not read independently any significant amount of time per day, you see the huge difference in the amount of vocabulary acquired and the achievement on literacy assessments. More recent research by Dr. Richard Allington shows the impact of summer reading on student achievement. He studied mainly low socioeconomic students, but he found that by sixth grade, students that did not read over the summer, whether it's because they did not have access to books or whether they chose not to read, there was as much of a two-year reading loss gap in reading achievement for students. And then by 12th grade, four or more years of a reading gap found in students that did not read over the summer. Providing easy access to books for summer reading will reduce the reading setback, and that's what he found in his research. And interesting, really, all he did was spend $50 on books for students who were low income, and he found that there was a significant gain just in providing $50 worth of books to students over the summer to read. They got to pick the books, they read over the summer, they followed up with some assessments in the fall, and found significant gains just by providing that. So, Dr. Anthony, I have to give credit for. She found this program at one of her conferences, and she came back and invited the sales rep to come in and tell us about it. And we listened, and we thought, this is interesting. But what it is, it's an online reader. It provides anytime, anywhere access to a library of more than 8,000 enhanced digital books. It has multimedia supports, real-time recording and assessments, and embedded close reading tools, and we'll show you those in just a minute. It creates an individual reading dashboard based on student interest and reading ability. When the students first log on to the program, they do a little interest inventory, they do a little reading assessment, and then the program actually provides suggested titles for the students to read. Even though it provides the suggested ones, they still have unlimited access to all of the other books on the platform. Picture books, graphic novels, which are very popular with students that don't really like to read. Graphic novels are a great motivating product for them. Chapter books, and then for English language learners, there are Spanish and bilingual titles. It allows the teachers and administrators to track the students' reading activity. And when Mrs. Kilmari tells you about that, it's really exciting what she was able to do and go in and monitor how the students were reading. Lots of data we get from Myon. We find the number and the type of books opened and read by students, time spent reading, completion of book quizzes at the end of each book, the results of regular benchmark assessments. After the students read a certain number of books, they are automatically given a benchmark. And it also provides a report that forecasts long-term reading load. Right now, what I would like to do is just take you out to the website, push the on button. There we go. And show you. This is the page, the dashboard, that the students find after they log on, and I just happened to click on animals and insects and bugs. So if a child likes to read about insects and bugs, and this is an elementary level one, it does go up to eighth grade, here are just a whole bunch of books right there for them to click on and open and take a look at. And the mouse is unmarked here. Let me see if I just hit enter. Oh, there we go.
Sometimes he just goes to sleep on the off-the-ruins.
Start to look at it. What happens, they click on the book and the book is open. And the program is initially set up that the book will be read to the student, but there are other options where we can click that off and the student reads it independently. So here's the book called Caterpillar and Butterfly. You can see students that have read this book previously rated at four stars out of five. Tom, if you click on read. So it's animated, there's some nice music. Click the right arrow, Tom.
Can you right arrow to advance, Tom?
From Caterpillar to Butterfly, Following the Lifecycle, by Suzanne Slade, illustrated by Jeff Yesh. Colorful Flyers. Butterflies fill our sky with beauty. Some butterflies are large, others are small. These insects have colorful wings... These insects have colorful wings that may have stripes or spots. There are at least 15,000 different kinds of butterflies in the world. All butterflies go through the same stages.
That's great. Thanks, Tom.
What's going on now is called, it's a form of model of reading for the student. The book is being read to the child, but the child has the option to also hit the "sh" button at the bottom and read the book on their own. For the child that's hesitant to read, they may want to have the book read to themselves, read to them the first time. Then they can turn off the sound and read it on their own. They can continue to read with the sound. There are different options. You also notice the words are being highlighted as they were being read. So, if a child doesn't know a specific word, but they see that word and they hear that word being said, they will eventually be able to read that word on their own. Tom, can you forward through to the end of the story?
The Amazing Butterfly.
Yep, there you are.
You want to read it?
No, you don't have to. You can keep going through. The child, as I said, had the option to turn the sound on or not. Some of the children would have the sound on at first, had it read to them, and then go back and reread it on their own as they gained more confidence. And that option was available on each story. Now, we also had the opportunity, I worked with 21 children at the first grade level going into second grade, and as they were reading, when they first met with us, they took a level placement test, and then as they were continuing to read, we would give them additional testing and see that their Lexile level, which is a measure of their reading ability, went up. And I just have to say that I had four children that were below beginning reader. They weren't even measurable yet. And those students increased over 100 points in their Lexile level in just five weeks. That is tremendous. And these are children that may not have opened a book over the summer by themselves at home. And we, as teachers, call that the summer slide. It's the loss that they have when they don't read. Myself, I love to have books in my hands. They are technological-based. These children love these computers. I spoke to my two-year-old nephew yesterday. He's put through his iPad faster than I could. They love this. This is interactive, it's based on their interests, it's based on their reading level, so they're not faced with a book that is too difficult for them. It's based on where they aren't able to read and feel successful. I was very excited to work with this program. I went through the seven hours of training the first day. I couldn't wait to start. I'm so excited. And I'm the teacher that kept calling them, "You're not reading, why aren't you on? Are you going to read?" And I can tell you now, I haven't monitored them officially since all these kids, but I go on every couple of days and my students are still reading, even though they know they're not being monitored by me officially anymore, they are still reading. The child read a level of chef's ed. I think that's phenomenal. I think it's a great program. Thank you, Dr. Anthony, for bringing it to our district. Thank you, Ms. Taylor, for allowing me to participate in it. Dr. Clark, I think it's a wonderful program and I hope we can continue.
Mrs. Kilmarie already told you a little bit about the Summer Reading Heroes program. What was so exciting, that very first day we had the students log on, we had data. We knew who went home and opened up their device and started reading that day. It was just really exciting to see that. Here's just our data. This is five weeks. We had 59 students participating. They opened 1,585 books, because sometimes we open books and decide, we don't want to read them. They read 990 books, spending 114 hours and 58 minutes. And our next step, like I said, Milpon Elementary School will continue with the license and their 700 students will have access to 8,000, over 8,000 books for independent reading. So, we're very excited to see the results for this. So, I'm glad that everyone came out to hear about this wonderful program. I know that's probably the only reason why you're here, but I'm glad I got to tell you about it. So, thank you very much.
So, I just want to first thank Mrs. Kilmarie and Ms. Taylor. And one of the things that I think has to be pointed out is inherent in this design of the program, not only did we use Myon, but we woven several components that we believe added to the success of the program. Mrs. Kilmarie mentioned it, and I don't know if you picked up on it, but it's probably one of the most important things of this program, and that was that we had teachers reaching out to the homes. If they weren't visiting, they were calling and following up and getting on the phone with our students and just checking in with them. That's awesome. We also had some students who didn't have a device so that they wouldn't be able to read those books in the summer. They might not have the availability to get to the library, and they might not have the books at home, and they certainly might not have had the technology to view the books. So, we loaned the technology to those students. If they needed the technology to be a part of the program, we gave it to them. I'm very excited about the results. I'm excited that this is another level of intervention for our students, and this really comes from the voice of our staff. And although I appreciate the commendation, what it really comes down to is our teachers saying and our administrators saying, we need more for students who are at risk from an intervention perspective. And so, I'm very, very excited about the success, very much due and owing to the staff that work, to the teachers. Your commitment, your passion, your diligence, your creativity really has started to set a touchstone for us in the future. I hope that this program continues, and it will, under your guidance and leadership, and I thank you for everything that you did. Incredible experience. I believe that other than getting ready for a warm welcome to our students and our families to make sure that you are visiting us at back-to-school nights and reaching out in any way, I want to welcome you to what is about to be an awesome starting in September, 15, 16 school year. That concludes my report. Mrs. Terrell.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony. At this time is when we have an opportunity for the public to make public comment. Just to remind people, the school--
Does the student's ticket go in?
Sure. This is when we also, because a lot of times during the year, we have a lot of students come for awards, and we take a brief break in case before a public comment, they would like to be on their way. There's only about two students here tonight, but if those students would like to take a break, and we will do so. Thank you again for coming out. Thank you. In regard to public comments, we just ask people to raise their hands. I call upon them. They go to the podium over here. Careful, there's a step up. So, be careful when you step up. I'm going to move this. I apologize. And just state your name and your address. We try to be respectful, so I'm asking nobody boo or hiss or clap, just because we can't hear that. Everything is tape-recorded, video-recorded. We play it on Channel 21. We know sometimes that's why people come, but just so everybody understands, every word is recorded. And we won't be having a debate. This is not a debate. It's an opportunity for the public to share any of their concerns, any of their praise, any of their comments they would like to with the school board before we vote on the agenda items. So, with those instructions, who would like to be the first?
Thank you.
Watch the step.
My name's Nick Spaltrow. I live at 25 Dunbury Drive in the Seabreeze and Lacy Community, Toll Brothers Community. And I know they're going to say, well, you know, and a lot of my neighbors are here. We're not a lot of old people complaining, you know, and anti-education. We're actually the opposite. You know, the Seabreeze community consists of a lot of retired executives, professionals, and educated people, and we value education. So, you know, what our concern is, and you know, be upfront with you, is really the bang for the buck. We have a, we've been to the township committee meetings. We are more and more active in the township committee. We've actually formed a civic affairs committee. So, we've put together a group of homeowners volunteered to become part of the civic affairs committee so that we come to your meetings, we interact with you folks, we interact with the town, we interact with the freeholders, and we've reached out to the state legislatures as well. Because we recognize that we're a significant demographic. And in case you don't know, you know, our community is, we're about 174 homes out of a 568-home development. So, we have about 348 voters. We'll call them all voters, but you know, the residents, right? But we all vote. And you know, at full build-out, there'll be over 1,100 voters. So, I think we're a significant demographic, and you know, we've moved to this community. We like the community. We've come here from as far as New York, upstate New York and New Jersey, northern New Jersey, things like that. But you know, our concern is, you know, is the shocking tax increase. You know, 13% overall tax increase, 15% just for the schools, you know, which is far in excess of budgetary caps, and we recognize there's debt service exclusions in here. But we are eager to learn, you know, just like we're going to learn what's going on in town, we're eager to learn what's going on in the Board of Education because it's 63% of our tax dollars. So, you know, and just to put this in terms of dollars, currently, right now, this year, Seabreeze homeowners will have paid $840,000 in school taxes, and coupled that with about $220,000 from Toll Brothers on the land that they own, that's over $1 million in taxes. At full build-out, that's $3.6 million at today's rate. $3.6 million at full build-out. So, we're, you know, we are contributing, you know, quite a bit of money, and keeping in mind that Seabreeze is an age-restricted community, so no one under 19 can reside there. So, we have no impact on your school. It's zero impact on the school. We derive no benefit from the school. And, you know, but it's a big tax burden for us. So, I think we want to understand, you know, where's the bang for the buck? We want to understand where the money's being spent. And we have concerns. And we have concerns about, you know, highly compensated administrative staff for relatively small towns and small school districts. I understand that some of the administration here rank in the top, or top in Ocean County, where there's certainly bigger communities in Ocean County that have, you know, bigger school districts. You know, where are these, you know, budget increases coming from in the face of declining enrollment? We've observed that enrollment's going down. And you know, these are just some of the questions we have. And some of my neighbors, or I'll call them colleagues, you know, we have a finance guy who's very good, and he's been actually delving into your school budget. He's been looking at it line item by line item. And you know, I know Matt's eager to come up and ask some questions as well. But you know, one of the things that I look at this December 9, 2008 flyer here saying, no tax increase to you, solar panels. So, I mean, you folks are in the business of education, and you decided to get yourself in the energy, you know, electric generation business with its attendant debt and risks. So, you've gone in, you've put our money at risk, and you're doing debt service in face of a decline in bond rating as well. And I don't know how much that bond rating has to do with this particular project, but you know, we've got to, you know, understand what's really going on here. I mean, are we getting ROI and payback as advertised from these solar panels, or has this turned out to be a debacle? You know, we also observed that the state comptroller has come in here and, you know, chastised or criticized or made an example and said, hey, you know, this was an inappropriate expenditure, and it was far in excess of what you should have paid. There's other things that we've noticed, attorney billing practices, you know, and some of the billing rates that we've observed. And again, these are just some things, you know, contracts being awarded without competitive bid. Is there a competitive bid process that you utilize? We don't know. These are questions that we have. So, we're eager to learn. We have the professionals, retired professionals, we'll have time on their hands, and believe me, we can go through, you know, and we want to help. We're looking for a win-win relationship here. We're not looking to come here and beat on you. We're good citizens. These are good people. These people come from, like I said, we have educators, we have retired principals, we have all people from all walks of life in the community, want to contribute to the community. So, so as you can see, you know, we're just looking for value received here for the, you know, $1 million that we're spending today and the $3.6 million in the future.
Oh, thank you. And I actually think you have some working educators too. I think I recognize some.
We do have some working educators as well.
Yes, yeah. I think I actually know some folks.
Yes, yes.
So, no, I think that's a great, I think I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm going to move this. I'm a loudspeaker. I apologize. I think what would be the most beneficial is if Dr. Brower and Jim Savage, who is our business administrator, and myself, if that would be helpful, actually meet with all of you. Because a lot of the things that you've talked about, we've held lots of public forums on. We always have a public budget process, which is required by law, which we do every year. We've had numerous meetings since the solar project has been initiated. So, since August of 2008, we've held numerous meetings. So, there's a lot of information to share with you all. And I think there's maybe a lot of misinformation, but I think it'd be extremely helpful if we can sit down with you, provide you all the data that we have, all the facts that we have, and if you have any questions, then we can go through it. Because it's a lot of different things. One of the things you may have heard of too, we did strategic planning, and we invited the whole community to participate. That was a project that Sean Giordano was our chairperson, and that began this spring and concluded where public did show up and give their input in regard to what should be the standards for the school, what should be the goals for the school, where do we want to go as a community. And we did send out letters. We had a commercial on Channel 21. So, there's lots of opportunities. So, I'm glad you guys are here as a group because I haven't had the opportunity to meet with you. And I think the most beneficial thing is for us to have a meeting where now I know all the areas that you want information and data, so we can provide that to you.
President Terrell, I would suggest, or if you would accept my suggestion, a committee of the board meet with, because you said you have groups that meet with--
Yes.
Maybe a committee of the board, and you said like we do with the township, township liaison, we meet with township leaders.
And I think Mrs. Downing's not as loud as I am. She was suggesting a committee of the board, and we can absolutely do that. And maybe the finance committee, but I think that would be more beneficial because there's a lot of topics, and we can bring the information so we can give you what we have, and we are open to suggestions, and we are open to moving forward. We're all community members here too. Some of us have kids in the district, some of us have grandchildren in the district, and all of us pay taxes here.
Correct. And I know that, you know, like I said, some of our fellow committee members, you know, have questions on some specific line items and things like that, and want to understand, you know, where the money's being spent. And like I said, it is a significant increase, 13% overall tax increase plus the, coupled with the reassessment. I know personally, my taxes, you know, increased from 5,600 to 8,600, you know, and I'm retired. You know, we're living in a community of, you know, a fixed-income community, and we want to do our part, we want to provide the societal benefit, but we also don't want to be shouldering the burden ourselves.
No, and we appreciate that. I want to provide this to you. It has the district phone number. You can just call them through. Dr. Brower will set up that committee meeting. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to work together. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak tonight?
Jim Attellier, Lacy Township. Can everybody hear me? Just yell if you can. I want to touch on a few topics. First of all, I'd like to say, viewing the presentation on reading, anybody that knows in education, about education, reading is the foundation of learning, and without a solid foundation, you cannot achieve or succeed in education. So, I applaud the attempts to improve the educational level and reading levels, especially in the preliminary grades of K-3, which are very important because every study shows that if they succeed in the K-3 program, they're going to succeed the rest of their careers in school. So, I applaud that. I also applaud, as last October, I sat in this room, we were debating, and talked about the need to bring our children on board with laptops or tablets, and I see you go into Chromebooks. I just hope that you use them to the maximum benefit because you have online teachers' assignments and online lesson plans and online quizzes, online testing, and as you move forward in your development of your education-- And as you move forward in your development of your education, to look at eBooks instead of buying paper textbooks, much cheaper, easier to update, and there's a lot of benefits. But I hope, hopefully, that this board and the future boards can also show the cost savings through, had you purchased textbooks versus online. But there should also be a reduction in printing costs, photocopy papers, hopefully the assignments, you won't have to buy workbooks anymore as it filters down through the grades. But we should also see, as you go to these Chromebooks, once they're implemented and brought up to speed, as I said last October, my son benefited from private school, gone through the later years of grade school, through high school, through his undergrad and his masters, the value of online textbooks, the value of having everything at your fingertips. I'm still old fashioned, I got a flip phone. If I get a dial on it, I'll be happy. But the other part, there's a good benefit to them. And, but I just want to see in the future that you show the cost analysis to the public, where you're saving money in the future, where are we breaking even? But it's a good way. Now, there's a couple of things for those who weren't here earlier at the agenda meeting, I think it up and speak, I won't be lengthy, but I'll try to bring up some of the controversy that's been surrounding. I am the one, let me, I'll clarify like we did so you don't have to say it again. Yes, I am a candidate for the Lacy Township School Board. So I am running, and one of the things that I'm running on is to give the voters, the citizens, the right to choose whether to move the school board elections back to April where the voters will have the right to vote for or against the budget. The process, when I was served on the school board from '93 to '96 was if a budget was defeated, it went to the governing body, sat down with the school board and they worked out cuts and improvements to that. And if the school board does not have with those cuts, then they have the right to appeal higher rung. So there are checks and balances built into it. As a recent candidate, and I said earlier tonight and I'll say again, I never saw myself standing back here wanting to run for the school board again because I know what you go through and it's lose-lose sometimes and win-win sometimes. But it's a lot of time, a lot of effort. But last year, the main reason that I focused on changing this back to April, it became very partisan. It became viciously partisan. I don't have to remind what people read last year about fistfights and everything else over who's supporting who for the school board. The school board election, as far as I'm concerned, and again, whatever the voters decide, I respect, but it has to be nonpartisan as best as possible. It has to be transparent and it has to be to provide the highest quality of education in the most cost-effective manner. And you can't do that with partisan politics, I can tell you. So I would like to see, as we go forward, and there were some questions whether it's a binding referendum or non-binding. The, just so anybody that wasn't here knows, when the law was signed into law back in 19, or two, 19, show my age, 2011 by Governor Christie.
I'm sorry, 2012.
12, I'm sorry. It was for four years before the school board or the governing body or the voters can change it. And I have been advocating since last year for change. There's been dialogue with some board members, some committee members, and those that were at last township committee meeting heard what I had to say about moving it. There was some comments by the public and it became the fourth option. Once the governing body puts something on for public question, and that's the way the law reads, it becomes binding, but that's an argument that people will have. I checked out with the law, I spoke to the governor's office, I spoke to legislators about it. The other thing I would like to see, and it's very important, and I'm glad so many people are here, and I hope that everybody understands that, because a lot of people I spoke to was unaware that these meetings are televised on Channel 21 and Channel 22 on Comcast. And if you don't have Comcast, you could go to the school system website at WLTS-TV21 and you have a link for YouTube, is it?
It's right on the school's website.
On the school website, yes.
So you can watch it online if you'd like.
Right. And so those are important things. The other thing, when I served on this board and we saw it tonight, and I explained to a few people, we used to have on the first Monday of the month, an agenda meeting. As a board member on Friday, sometimes Saturday, depending, you would wind up with an eight, 10-inch package, sometimes even bigger, and you had to go through thousands of papers, thousand, hundreds of bills, millions of dollars. And it gave us an opportunity to sit down at the agenda meeting and openly discuss, it was open to the public, as tonight was, and discuss these things. And if you didn't have the answer, it gave the professionals and the staff the opportunity to come back to you so you can make a well-informed decision and question on why you're voting on something or voting against something. Often, you won't even know that you may be voting on something that you have a conflict of. So I would like to see this board, if not this board, if I'm fortunate to elect it, to move back to an open public agenda meeting to give the board members and the public an opportunity. Because if you sat here this morning, earlier today at 6 o'clock and you had a question, there's no way for, other than you come into the mic and they'll say, "Well, we'll get back to you, you got to wait another month." So those are issues about transparency and improvement. And whatever happens with the referendum, the voters decide to bring it back to April, there's pros and cons. There's cost-related, there's other issues. But I can tell you something, and I served with Ms. Downing and a variety of all the board members, what I saw last year drew the process of running for the school board secondly. And that's one reason I'm an advocate to change it. Nobody should be personally attacked or physically attacked for exercising a right as a citizen or supporting someone. So those are some of the concerns. The other issue, reviewing last month's reports, when you, with your drug program, under the random drug testing, which I support by the way, as a former law enforcement officer. But when I read the policy, there's one thing left out of this, antibiotic steroids. How come, how come antibiotic steroids were left out of this list?
That's a very good question, so I can, you leave your.
My son was a molecular biologist, reviewed it, so there's nothing even close to it.
So if you leave a contact number for me tonight, or if you want to contact my office tomorrow, I can get you that information.
Well, I just want to make sure it's part of the policy for legally, if something happens.
Because we just, as you probably were, the board just approved the list of drugs at the last meeting, actually.
Right, that's what I'm.
Yeah, so I just need to look and talk with our vendor to find out why that wasn't on there. So the answer will be easy enough in the morning.
No, I appreciate it. If it needs to be corrected legally, hopefully do that next meeting. And again, my comments, just so everybody understands, is not a personal attack or integrity of anybody here, but there's been a lot of rumors. And the best place to launder rumors, I just want to know something, and I know it's part of professional development and everything else. I spent all day Saturday night, Lacy Day, in the hot sun, but I talked to hundreds and hundreds of residents, parents, staff members. Is there any truth in a rumor? And it's not the blue district, everybody knows it's room for improvement and Star Ledger came out last year with a D-rating for the school.
Well, that's not true. That's absolutely not true. And we keep saying that and correcting it, so.
Well, there's enough people here, it's for you to correct it.
It's absolutely not true. I'm going to correct you right now, it's absolutely not true. We got a line, not a letter, a line.
Okay, well, that's why I said, so many rumors out there.
Yeah, that's not true.
And can you?
But it's, it's, you know, fun to keep saying, I know we've been.
No, I'm not saying.
We keep saying it, you can just look it up, you can Google it.
Well, you do, and you can come back to Star Ledger.
Yeah, did you see my student achievement report in the fall? If you look at that report, and I can send it to you, it's online as well, it'll answer those questions, but it's just not true. And that was 100 slides, so that we do. Are you doing that one also this year? So it's online for everybody. The information's there, the facts are there.
It's important to clarify this stuff because it's not beneficial.
We do, and if you ever watch the meetings, and you can look back, the facts are there. So it's important that we make sure people have the facts. I understand you're, you're running for office, but we want to make sure people have the front information.
Mr. Relle, my question isn't because I'm running for office, I said to clarify the rumors that are out there, which is beneficial to the transparency of this district. That's not a political statement.
We've addressed that probably every other month. So I apologize if you weren't able to see those meetings. So is there anything else we can clarify?
Excuse me, the rest of your audience doesn't know what you're talking about.
Oh, I apologize. The, his question was something about, he said, and I don't know why, because I don't think he ever read this, I think he's repeating a rumor that the Star Ledger had rated us as a D. That's just not true, that's never been true.
Excuse me, excuse me, I read it in the Star Ledgers, don't tell me it's a rumor.
No, last year, that last year.
And I clarified that.
It's not last.
And I said, and the rumor persists, and I'm asking you and the superintendent to clarify.
Right, and it's in the Star Ledger. No, but it's in the Star Ledger. It's in the Star Ledger, we've had addressed it. We've addressed it.
Mr. Relle.
There is no grade, it's a line.
It's a line.
It's actually a line.
There was a grade given for every school district and.
Not last year.
Lacy Township came out with a D-rating.
It's not, not last.
Not last year.
The Star Ledger completely changed the rating. They completely changed the rating, it's not true.
And if you look, a line, a line, straight and a line, it's a line. It's literally a line, I know some of you are looking it up, it's literally a line. Yeah, and so one of the things I would encourage you, there is 100 slides.
Yeah, I think our line, yeah, our line was this way, line, straight.
But there is 100 slide presentation online about student achievement and it's all based on facts and figures, so I'm glad I could clarify that, but is there?
But yourselves should know your own grade.
There's no grade, there's no grade. They didn't, they changed their methodology, so they're not doing it that way.
Wait, who stands?
They, it depends on, pardon me, yeah, well, let Mr. Lutelli finish and then if you would like to address, but the Star Ledger has a methodology, Department of Education has other information, so we can talk about that. And it is all online, so we can, and the presentation again will be, what, is it September or October? October, we do it annually, so please come back. Was there another question?
Yeah, I'd like to complete my statements tonight.
Do I apologize?
No, it's fine.
I just want to make sure there's enough time for everybody else.
Healthy conversation is good for public information. I have no problem with it. But once again, I'm standing before you telling you, yes, I am a candidate, but this isn't politically motivated. The reason I am a candidate is because these questions have gone unanswered as long as much more as far as spending and budgeting. And I could, I could stay here all night, but I'm not going to do that to the people because there's so many questions, line items and transfers of money. I'm, so again, I'm very respectful to every member that dies in this audience and all I ask is to allow me to speak and exercise my constitutional right, that's all. Now, there's issues here about voting on moving the budget threshold again from $36,000 up to $40,000. Now, I know, I think when I was on the board, it was $12,000, and it went up. And I understand the convenience of it and I, but there's a difference about the ability to purchase something through a three-pot system versus the budget process. And the budget process through the threshold was, or the bid process, I should say, is to provide the most cost-effective, but has to be competent or complete. So it's not always the lowest bid, and I understand that. But as we keep moving these thresholds up, it seems that there's no, I don't want to say accountably because I have nothing but Mr., respect for Mr. Savage as a business administrator, despite everything that's being read, I worked with him, I think he's a professional, we can, you know, and I'm not here to talk about salaries or anything right now, those are things for the future, but you have people that have integrity, but this is a process that the public, and you know Mr. Schumacher as a business administrator in municipal government, that the public has to have confidence in the process. And that's all I'm saying. So I really question why we keep incrementally moving it up. I know there's a convenience and I know cost goes up, so maybe somehow you can explain that.
It's, it's not because of that, and anybody can, just page 41, it, I think what Mr. Lutelli is referring to is increase of bid threshold, that's set by state law, so it's, the government sets that. So that was, it's pursuant to NJSA 18 Big A, call it 18 Big A dash 3B, and that was set by the state through the governor's office and consideration with this. But that's set by the state, that's not something we set.
Well, I'm asking again for clarification and because, let's face it, I mean, we're facing a $19 trillion deficit and every time we just keep increasing caps and spending and it filters all the way down to the local, everything is local when it comes to politics.
Well, just to clarify though, we're not, this is set by the government, by the state, and just to clarify, Mr. Savage, can you explain what the bid threshold is and what that means? Because I don't think most people would understand.
If we purchase a piece of equipment and it costs more than now $36,000, we're required to go out and bid unless the state has gone out, or the state. The, the state of New Jersey has, is increasing the bid threshold to $40,000 and on tonight's agenda, we're, we're asking that the board approves increasing the threshold to that $40,000 range. That's kind of what we're doing here tonight.
It's important.
It's very, we don't really purchase much anymore, buses maybe that are over that threshold, it's very rare that we buy anything over the threshold.
Because again, like I said, I just told you, I spent hours and hours talking to people and trying to explain things and, you know, if I say something, well, he's a candidate, he's saying, here's a public forum for an open dialogue and to explain it. As the gentleman earlier talked about, questioning, and another question came up, and again, nothing against Mr. Stein, but the legal fees, just based on the budget last year, according to the audit, you budgeted in the beginning year $150,000 and the total paid was, correct me if I'm wrong, around $286. And what kind of litigation or actions were taken that would increase spending that kind of money?
I don't know if it was $286. Are you talking to me, Mr. Lutelli?
Well, I, again, it's not, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not sure it was.
I was looking at the comparisons of the 2014 school year to the 2013 years in the audit that was done, and I saw each, it was budgeted $150,000.
That's correct.
And there was a transfer of $140,000 to complete the school year. And that's what I'm just saying, I didn't read, and again, there's a lot of litigation that goes on with students and stuff that's not public knowledge until after things, but again, it's not a tax. And I said it from the beginning, there's questions that make people uncomfortable, but it's not a personal attack, it's just an explanation of where the money's going and why such a, I mean, you know, when you're talking about a 42% bump, oh, my math, I don't have a calculator, increase, it warrants explanation to the public.
It's actually a practice that the board has engaged in for about 20 years. And I think you may have still been on the board when it was initiated. They came out, they decided to use a number and then recognized that that was probably not going to be a real number. And in many years, it has not been a real number.
No, it hasn't, and that's, that's true, it hasn't, to be fair to you. But we did, I remember on the board, we had discussions, we voted on certain changes to the procedure to make sure, and again, it's not just the legal bills because obviously if you're doing the work, you're entitled to pay. It was more the policy where we sort of structured it, instead of every board member calling Mr. Stein and every principal calling Mr. Stein, it was structured so to reduce the cost of those bills. There's something I could make, I could honestly tell people publicly that would make people very aggravated to hear, but it's the practice. So we want to be sure whoever, whether it's Mr. Stein or anybody else doing the work, that there's some controls, there's checks and balances. I know, I know things are supposed to go through you.
No, it's not even more than that, not only do we have state policy, but it's required by the accountability regs, so all school boards in the state of New Jersey have that policy in place. That's also something else you can Google. So it's only the board president or if a board member, let's say somebody who's on negotiation team, has a specific question that they need to address, they contact me, I give them permission to speak with Mr. Stein, who's our board attorney. It's the superintendent or her designate me.
Board administrator.
Yeah, and the board administrator, and that's it.
And so, and.
And we always try, we do try to control costs. Every dollar we spend there is a dollar that I can't spend in the classroom, so that is something, and these board members will tell you because it drives me crazy when I feel that. when I feel that we are overusing Mr. Stein. I'm the first one to say it. I'm the first one to ask if they can get their information someplace else because I don't like board members generating legal work. And our legal bills are public. And you'll see there are board members who are generating legal work. So, we keep working on that, and we're trying to be better as a board. And we will continue to discuss it. One of our resources is New Jersey School Board Association. We are using that, and we are continuing to do so. Some of the things we can't control are special education costs when suits are filed by parents, when there's employees who are... Have workers' comp issues or in the time maybe sue for disability. There's a lot of issues. And as anybody who runs a big organization would realize, it's not just questions the board has. It's everything from slip and fall in our building to retirement benefits for somebody if there's a dispute or negotiations or team negotiations.
Workers' compensation, negotiations, student suspension, subpoenas involving students, subpoenas involving personnel, dealing with FMLA issues, dealing with NJFLA issues. And I could go on and on and on.
Mr. Stein, as I said, and I know in the past you've been personally attacked. I'm not here personally attacking you. But I do ask questions. Slip and fall, we have liability insurance. Insurance company has an attorney. That attorney represents, may communicate with you on stuff. Workers' comp is a worker comp case procedure. Do we have a worker comp? We used to... When I was on here, we used to have a labor council for negotiation.
We don't. We don't have separate councils. So, that's one way we cut costs by only having one attorney. Because I even reached out to school boards to see if it would be cheaper for us to use them. And I got a response in email that they charge a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour in... To be in the room. And they charge a hundred and twenty-five dollars for prep time. So, that doesn't save us any money. At this time, the board members have been working on their own. We got a lot of guidance. So, we're looking to cut costs. So, we are working on our own to try to negotiate and with then having attorney review. So, we're always looking to cut costs.
Okay.
We pay the same taxes that every Vales does, which is unfortunate. So, every dollar we can save here benefits us all.
Well, I appreciate the time, and I appreciate your clarification. And once again, I'll leave you with expect people to ask questions, and it's not a personal attack. And I say personal attack you. But every person has the right to know where the dollars are going and offer suggestions to improve the system.
I absolutely agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just... And I apologize. Sometimes I get exacerbated because some... It feels like some months where I ask... Answering the same question every month. So, I apologize. I'm only human. And Mr. Letellier was here during the agenda meeting and did discuss that with us. What I'd like to make sure is that people actually have the facts. So, in regard to school board elections, there is a fact sheet. We provided it earlier. Here's more copies. It tells you exactly what the law says. And I know there's a... People up there raising their hands. I have a guy who wants to come first, all the way down. But here's the fact sheet in regard to school board election. And if you need more copies, I should provide it to you. So, does anybody need these?
Sorry.
Vanessa. Vanessa. So, who would like to speak, Mr. Bidnick?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Bidnick. I am the chair of the Lacey Citizens for Responsible Government. I am so thrilled tonight to see so many citizens here to hear about how their money is being spent on what, since it is the largest amount of our tax dollars that is spent and is on our tax bill. I do have a professional question. You were showing about the Mayon program. I am a former library director. Reading is one of my main expertises. I'd like to know, what are we doing with our local public libraries for the summer reading program where they have a host of books online and ebooks? And they have summer reading programs for children actually to participate, all as a group where someone is actually reading books? And they also read and they report back to individuals? What is this school doing with our local public library?
We've always used it. I can speak to this because my children went through the school district. So...
What are we doing now?
Pardon me?
What are we doing now?
My understanding is that we're still using it. There was a requirement, and obviously, the professionals. But just as a parent, there was a requirement for my children to read certain books at the library. And then they had to go online and do their book report by the end of the year. So, we always did that. In regard to the summer reading programs, my son and a lot of our students volunteered through the SHIP program. So, they helped tutor children who had difficulties reading. And the local library still has that program. We're very interactive.
Well, that's literacy.
We invite... Yeah. We invite the libraries in so we make sure every child has a card. But yeah, that's... Part of our summer program has always been to connect with the library. Because it's... You're right. It's a wonderful and free resource.
Exactly.
So... And we continue to do that. Anything free, we like.
Yeah. Well, that's a good thing. Especially it's that it also works at a much cheaper cost than having to get separate programs and do separate things since a lot of this stuff is already available. I have missed the last several meetings because I've been tending to my dying father's affairs. He recently passed away. I'm here tonight now to talk about several other things. But, you know, my father was a highly decorated veteran from World War II. He fought for individuals to be able to speak freely at public meetings, to expect that there would be honesty and trust from our government, that our government would give us honest answers when honest questions were asked. And we have had a lot of go back and forth over the last... Since January, actually, between my group and members of my group and the school board on a host of issues, many of them being about finances, how the money is being spent here. Is it being spent prudently? What ways can be around to make things more efficient? We haven't really seen that. I've been somewhat disappointed because when the budget was passed, it was over a million-dollar increase again. When so many people in our community are struggling. We have, you know, over five hundred homes in foreclosure. There are so many people who are paycheck to paycheck, but nobody cares about them. Nobody. But your taxes keep going up. Our government bodies just keep thinking that this money's going to grow on air. And it's just going to keep growing on air and on trees. But it isn't growing on air. It isn't growing on trees. And the school needs to. Because it is the largest single entity that we pay taxes to, has to start living in the real world of the people who are paying the bills and who are taxed and repeatedly increased in their taxes. It is very, very important that our government... That our elected officials in particular are extremely conscious of every single dollar that is spent. That has been my whole purpose of coming and speaking, and also about student achievement. Because if the board isn't doing its job, the teachers aren't going to be doing their job. And the students aren't going to be getting the education that they deserve. So, there's a couple of things I'd like to talk about. I watched all the meetings since when I... I wasn't... When I wasn't here. I was extremely, extremely upset about things that transpired at this last meeting. This happens to... This issue, this first issue is with our board president, Madam Terella. She basically doesn't seem to understand that an elected official on this body, Regina DeSensel, has the right to request any information concerning anything that deals with this body. She was elected by the mass majority of the electorate at this past election. The reason that she was elected is to do the people's work. She is doing the people's work. In fact, she has worked harder than anybody that I know of with all the meetings she attends, with all the research that she does. She is a model, model school board representative. I think, Madam Terella, that you tend to forget that you, as an elected official, are responsible to us, the taxpayers. We are not to be treated disrespectfully or we aren't... We... It seems like you at times consider utter arrogance that some people get up here and they actually question things. Or they do research, and they try to find out how their money is being spent, whether our students in our school district is really what it is. I mean, there are a lot of questions because no one believes anything that's coming out of this school anymore. I mean, it seems like we have people here tonight who are talking about reports that they've seen by the Star Ledger, a D. I saw it on a website up there when we were talking. But you're saying it's not true. Well, you're saying it's not true. Let's hear the Star Ledger come and tell us that it's not true. That I would like to hear. I'd like to hear something from their end. I would also like to talk about something that happened with our highly-paid attorney, Mr. Stein. I was doing some research about the pay-to-play law and things that you have to basically report to, to the state, so that you don't have to do what we call an RFP, which means he doesn't have to... We don't have to have competitive bidding for our lawyer, even though it's a couple hundred thousand dollars a year that we're paying. When I did this research, I happened to find out that Mr. Stein is actually working for four school districts. He has been an extremely busy man. He's sixty-nine years old. I don't know how, in the light of day, he manages to do all the work that he does and get it all done. And, you know, and it seems almost impossible to me. But I want the public to know the dollar figures. Okay? In two thousand and thirteen, Mr. Stein collected six hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents from the four school districts that he has been working for.
Who?
Plumstead was eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. Ocean Gate Board of Education, nine thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Central Regional Board of Education, three hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Lacey School Board Education, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. Now, this is all on top of his private business that he has. So, you can imagine he's an extremely, extremely busy man. On top of that, I looked at the two thousand and fourteen report. Okay. In this year, he reports four hundred and ninety thousand, seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents to the state. Plumstead, a hundred and thirty-six thousand, forty-three dollars. The Ocean Gate Board of Education, six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. They seem to be very smart. It's not having very high legal bills. Central Regional Board of Education, a hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars. And the Lacey Township Board of Education, two hundred and one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents. Now, if you don't think that there's a problem with this, I don't know what is. But something must be done. Now-
We... Is there a lot of litigation here? I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know nothing about it. I'm just reporting from reports.
If we could let him finish because I know there's a lot of other people who would like to speak.
Okay. So... The other thing I want to lead into are the comments that Mr. Stein made concerning our school board superintendent, Mrs. Anthony.
Dr. An... I'm sorry. Dr. Anthony?
Well, yes. Whatever. Dr. Anthony. Yes. So, let's see here. Let me get this right. Okay? You were commenting about a article that was printed online concerning our school board superintendent, Dr. Anthony. And you were saying that the report online said that Dr. Anthony, you know, she never received a letter of exoneration from the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office. Now, I have a little bit of a problem with this because somebody isn't telling the truth. I met with... Her name was Dr. Browden, back in January privately in her office. And one of the many topics that we talked about was about the Hable case. And I asked her outright, "Did you receive a letter of exoneration?" And her response was, "Yes, I did." And I said, "Then why didn't you have it posted online through the news reports? Because it's only going to help you professionally." She said to me, "I don't really think it would be helpful." So, I took it at her word that she didn't feel it would be helpful. But then I watched this last meeting. And I'm trying to understand you, Mr. Stein. You, this highly-paid lawyer who knows the law. You say that the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office does not give... There's no such thing as a letter of exoneration.
Correct.
Well, yes, there are, sir. Well, I know there are.
Well, it's not... It's just different terminology. But that's what we were trying to explain. But go ahead and finish, and then Dr. Anthony can address it.
She said she received a letter of exoneration.
Are you sure the word was an expungement, Mr. Bidnick?
No, it wasn't. You know, I actually tape-recorded our meeting on my phone. Would you like it?
Why would that be answered with applause? I'm not sure.
If you take that conversation without consent, you've broken the law.
Okay.
But...
But it's a very serious question about that. You've broken federal and state law.
Let's just leave...
Actually.
But let's... Wait. Wait. I just want to stop for a second.
Aside from the ethics, morals.
Okay. Wait. Let's just stop for a second. There were promises. And we are here. We're volunteers. You know? And I know there's educators here. I... You're the principal for a senior Donovan. Is that correct? Yeah. No? No? I thought... You look so familiar. See? But there... We're all community members. So, I know, Mr. Bidnick, this is your style. I understand that. I've been... Since I've been on the board since two thousand and eight, you have come up and entertained us. We... When you finish, we can answer, try to give you information.
I'm not finished yet.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if you could just, if you could just finish the statement.
Okay, let me, let me finish.
It may be helpful. I understand that you're exacerbated.
Yes, I am.
Um, but for us to be able to get to it and give you some information, it might be helpful.
Okay. So, um, I also listened to other comments that were made by, at the last meeting, by our board president. She was saying that she felt the staff were doing an excellent job. And she said that there was certain people, especially a particular person who was sitting on our school board, who was trying to bring bad light on the school district. I, I personally took offense to that, because I think it was a slap in the face to every hard-working parent in this town, to every taxpayer in this town. To think that we have teachers that work here, and believe me, I'm an educator myself, and I want the best education for our kids, but I also want there to be student achievement tied to any evaluations that any teacher does, because how are you going to possibly get people to be the best they can be if it isn't tied to something? But, I mean, this is just the real world, and this is the way that I see it as a professional. I just find it really disgraceful, actually, that you sat here and you praised everything when most of us know that this school is not doing very well, that we have heroin problems, that we have a lot of kids that can't even read properly. I mean, we've got a lot of issues in this school, but you blame, tried to blame this on Mrs. De Sensa. But the issue is, it's your fault and your cohort's fault. You want to know why? Because if you had given and been supportive right along with supplying information that has been asked, that she is entitled to, that actually the public is entitled to, and not fighting her with this, I wouldn't be up here, standing here and saying these things. And the board would not be looking the way it is, it's practically ready to implode.
But that's not true. And I have given her, I don't have documents, and I, maybe the prefects can sit down, I don't know if Mrs. De Sensa is giving you misinformation, but I don't retain documents at all. That's not how it works in regard to several things that she's asked for. So, she has asked the right people who have documents, the board secretary, the attorney, the superintendent. So, what I was referring to is the code of ethics that all board members have to abide by, and I can make copies of that, too. We used to have a chart sitting here that actually showed it, saying that a board member will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of the children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the intellectual needs of children, that a board member will refuse to surrender any independent judgment to special interest or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends. It goes on and on. We had a televised training as to the board of ethics, but it goes on, that it says, "I recognize the authority rests with the board of education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that will compromise the board." So, all of the board members act under the code of ethics. If we do not so, a community member or another board member or staff could file a violation against us. That's what I was reminding.
Okay. Well, this is, I just want to continue, since you haven't let me finish. Quite frankly, you talk about two ways to move forward. One that is supportive and helpful, and one that would paint a negative light on the district. But as I said before, you can blame yourself and your cohorts for all of that. The public deserves honest answers concerning honest questions, but we have gotten is a complete runaround. In fact, it's becoming a joke. It seems almost every word coming out of this board is a lie, including the words "the" and "I." Okay? So, on top of that, I'd just like to say this. The word truthful seems to be lacking in the vocabulary around here. When the individuals at the top of any organization do not follow down a path of utter honesty and transparency, what we see here is what one gets. It's another very sad day here in Lacey, and it just seems to be getting worse. So many individuals have seen their taxes go up and up tremendously since the reassessment. I, for one, saw my taxes go up almost twenty percent. It seems that no one cares. I do care. No one is listening. I am listening. And an utter disrespect of the electorate seems to be the order of the day. When an elected body functions such as this one, everyone is a loser, the board, the public, the staff, and especially the students. Somehow, we have really, really lost our way. I don't live in a world that you people do. I believe and fight for transparency, for respect of others' tax monies, for sympathy for those who are struggling and are one paycheck from being out in the street. And believe me, there just are so many of us around. A quality public education should not eat everyone out of their house and home. That is not the way this country was founded, nor are the principles of common respect in any caring community. The revelations that continue to come out concerning this school only proves this point. A government body that is not watched carefully will not work in the public's best interest. Another big lesson for all of us here in Lacey. Thank you.
My name is Mary Moles, 2012 Brookdale Drive. Is there anyone that cannot hear me? Good. I go one better. This is my second board meeting today. I was so incensed when I left last month's board meeting that today, before I came here, I watched the whole thing on YouTube. I thought the behavior of some of the board members was disgraceful. I'm not going to go over it a thousand times, but my point here, I had many points to make, but the most important one, I don't like having to comment on what you did last month. Now, I want to be able to comment on what you do in the next half hour, when this is all stopped. It, it's not fair. You get to beat somebody up and chew them out, and we're not allowed to say a word. I don't, I, something is wrong with the system. I think this is about the sixth meeting I've attended. I know no more today, or maybe a little bit more, than I did the first meeting I attended. I'm not a stupid woman, I'm just old.
Apparently, I am, too, for Mr. Bidnick.
Not as old as I am. But anyway, I took the time to listen to that meeting again, and, and what the previous speaker said was true. Mrs. Terrell, you looked directly at the camera after Regina spoke, and you told the people of Lacey that she attacked the teachers and the students, and that was not true. She did, she did not attack them. She is challenging the decisions of the board, and apparently, nobody likes it, because it puzzles me. We all know she was elected by a majority of Lacey taxpayers, and I, I don't recall one other no vote to support her no vote. And I, I get the no votes, and I don't understand why, you know? I have to mind someone. She has offered to explain some of the things to me, but our time is, we both have problems. But anyway, I would like to see a change in the election process, so that the township has a second, everybody, there should be checks and balances. You want to spend the money? It's our money. That's the problem, when you spend other people's money, it's really not a good, good thing, you know? It's kind of like using a credit card. If you have to part with cash, you don't spend nearly as much. But when you just have a credit card, ah, it doesn't cost anything, not till next month. But I would like to see that changed, and I would also like to see public comments after the next part of the meeting. Thank you.
Are you freezing?
I know, it's not freezing over here.
Thank you. My name is Ron Martin. I'm a board member of the HOA of Seabreeze. I want to thank you for extending the offer to meet with us and our finance committee to help us better understand the processes that you're handling.
He's in New York.
Okay. Those are my friends.
I don't know if there's a mic, there's a mic.
There is a mic here. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, now I have anything to say. Okay, thank you for extending the offer to meet with our finance committee. We appreciate that. One of the things that our community is really prying to do, and that is to become full-fledged members of the community, and I'll say upfront that all of us, in our dealings with our stores downtown and all of the places where we do business, we are received graciously, and we are really impressed by the courtesies extended to us. Probably one of the reasons for that is that, on average, each of us spends about fifteen thousand dollars a year in this town. Contrary to popular opinion, it's not all on wine.
Well, junior is very close.
It is. Some of it is. Most of it's on.
The German butcher, don't forget.
Yeah.
There we go, the German butcher. Without the German butcher, we wouldn't survive. So, we, we have a great interest in ensuring that our community succeeds, prospers, and our people will have a good continued lifestyle. We had the pleasure of going to the town council meeting the other evening, and a fellow citizen came up and asked for a resolution to be passed on changing the voting of the school budget. And I was just curious, among you, how many would be in favor? Or would it, what will be the position of the school board relative to that issue?
And we handed out the fact sheet. We have not taken a vote on that. Committees have talked about it. And just to address this, I know Mr. Letalay was on the board a long time ago, but it was set up different. We have committee meetings every week. I, myself, am in meetings sometimes two to three times a week during, and Mrs. De Sensa and other members also. So, we do a committee structure, and it has been discussed. In the fact sheet, you'll see its front back. It explains why the state changed the law, why they pushed for it, because there was such low voter turnout in school elections, and that data is also on there, on the back of it, if you look at it, what the voter turnout was in Lacey. And the fact that the two percent levy on increasing tax was not on school boards, and the fact that the sense was from the legislature that special interest groups were able to control school boards too much. So, you'll see it spelled out, but that's why the governor signed the bill, that's why the legislature, there was bipartisan support to move the elections to November and encourage districts to do so. It explains, because it's not as simple as people have been told. If you look on the back, at the very bottom, I put a little star next to it, explains that process. To move the election to November, it's the vote of the school board, or the township committee, or by petition of the public. And then, after the petition is fifteen percent of those who voted in the last presidential election, it gets put on the November ballot. That's how you move it to November. Now, moving it back, it's also any of those three. But it's very specific, it says in the fact sheet, "The difficulty is, if we move the election back to April, it will cost us about thirty thousand dollars, that is not budgeted for. We would be the only school district in all of Ocean County to have our elections in April." The two percent tax levy, that cap would not constrain us by law, and that's why we talked earlier at the agenda meeting, that most of the districts in the state of New Jersey, and there's only seventeen of them, the whole state of New Jersey, that have April elections. It's because those are districts who want to go beyond that two percent cap, because they're not restricted, okay? So, there was all this encouragement to move it to, to November, because people will come out and vote. It's still nonpartisan by law, the election, and there would be savings to the district. They would not have to foot the bill for the elections, but they'd have to live under the two percent tax levy. So, take a look at the front and the back of that fact sheet. It's all based on the information obtained from the Department of Education, from New Jersey School Boards Association, and also from various news outlets, and that's why we moved it in two thousand and twelve. So, it's very detailed. Obviously, when we meet with your group, we can talk about it more, but that's what we have to look at, is it would cost our district money to do that, and it would relieve the tax benefits. We have not had a vote from the board, it hasn't come out of committee. It can, it may, I can't project that, but we're continuing to talk about it to get more information. But, and if you need more fact sheets after the meeting, we can provide those. I'll ask that the superintendent put it online, so Dr. Anthony will do that front back. It's really important to have the facts. We all, it's, taxes are emotional, I totally understand.
Oh, they're not emotional, oh, it's real.
Well, they're emotional to me.
It's real dollars, that's disposable income.
Yeah, well, it's not. But I just paid, I paid four and a half dollars for a gallon of milk the other day. I almost fainted. So, we appreciate it. So, yeah, the community, we'd love to continue to work with as many groups as possible.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Moss, Mistake Drive, Oregon River Beach. I, I just have a question that someone can answer for me. The, excuse me. Standard and Poor's lowered the, the school bond rating from an A to a double A. It's been quite a while, and that means anytime you have to borrow money, we have to pay more interest on it. I don't want to hear, please don't tell me whose fault it is. My question is, what have you been doing to get it back to a greater rating, so that when you do borrow money, we pay less for it?
And we can absolutely answer that. Let me just make a statement first, and then I'll have Dr. Brower, have Dr. Anthony address it, I apologize. So, right now, just so the public's well aware, we are not seeking to borrow any money. We have no projects down the pipe, we are not building any schools, so we are not looking to bond. That is the good news.
I, I get the impression that you're not looking to fix it either.
No, 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 that, well, that's not true, but I, let's, Dr., we've been working on it for actually several months with the township committee, and I'll let Dr. Anthony address that.
So, we did have a spending freeze in the spring, so that we could capitalize and capture any of the unexpended funds that we already had available. And certainly, we're looking very carefully and judiciously at all of the budgeting that we've done for the fifteen, sixteen school year, so that we can continue to get those reserves up. I am still waiting for a letter from the municipal government, so that we can present that to the Standard and Poor's group, which would suggest and affirm that they would make their payments on time to the school board. So, there are several things in play, and they're just.
Dr. Brower, I don't want to hear whose fault it was.
I'm not suggesting whose fault.
I mean, I suggest just what you're doing to get it back up.
I'm telling you that we were anticipating a second review from Standard and Poor's, because they did not have accurate information. So, in any case, we do have a budget, we are continuing to work within that budget, and we're going to do everything that we can to continue to get those surplus numbers back up, for the same reason that you suggest, that it is extremely important, that should this, this board, and I don't anticipate at any time in the near future, we have no need for a building project, that we would have that kind of borrowing again. It's not in the foreseeable future.
Okay, that's all.
So, we're, yeah, we're trying to address.
Can I add something to you?
Okay, I was just going to say, there, and not to blink, you know, just point fingers, but there were two things pointed out in the report, so we're trying to address those two things. That was the surplus, and that the town would make their payments to the district on time. Those were the two things that they put in the report as to why they downgraded us. So, we've been working with Mayor Quinn, we've had two meetings with us, with them, the township committee, and they promised a letter to us that we could take the Standard and Poor's, and Dr. Anthony and Mr. Savage were anticipating to be able to have a meeting with Standard and Poor's to show our progress. We're still waiting for the letter. We met again in early August. As soon as we get that letter, we can set up the meeting with Standard and Poor's.
If I could just add to that, try to clarify it just a little bit. Mrs. Terrell did a very good job, but the way, the way the legislature set the system up is neither the school district nor county government have the right to collect taxes. Only municipal government has the right to collect taxes. And municipal government collects taxes not just to fund municipal government, but they also collect the taxes to fund the school district, and they collect the taxes to fund the county. And they're obligated by law, under Title fifty-four of the state statutes, to, on a periodic basis that's supposed to be pre-agreed to, transfer the money to the county and to the, and to the school district.
Mr. Stein, I understand that, but I don't want to hear excuses as to why. I want to know what you're doing to get it back to an A rating. I don't care if all, all the township's problems.
I want, I want to finish.
What are you doing?
So, the, the school district, representatives of the board, have, the representatives of the board, well, you asked what, what's being done.
I asked not to blame. You're trying to blame the schools, you're trying to blame the township. Fine, blame the township. What are you doing to get it up?
I didn't blame, blame the township. If you read the Standard and Poor's letter, they blamed the township. Don't blame that. Don't bring it up. Putting that aside, putting that aside. The board has met with the township, and the payments have been more steady and more on time, so it appears that that issue is behind us, no longer, perhaps no longer a problem. The other part of the problem was that this board historically has, when it created surplus, would return a major portion of that surplus in the way of tax relief. In other words, they would take a portion of the, of that money, and they would use it as revenue for the next tax bill. And that reduced the taxes that had to be raised, but in the process of doing that, it reduces the surplus, and Standard and Poor's was raising a concern that we were doing that too much. And that's being looked at, to change that process. So, that's what's being done.
Why would you want to just look at, change it?
I said it's being looked at to change it.
Change it? That's all. I'm just wondering if we can get back to the A rating, because, you know, it, it makes the school system a little bad.
Well, it is an A rating. It's not that it's a double A rating.
Get it back to a, it's a double A, it would reduce to a.
The one, the good news is, we're much higher rated than the state of New Jersey right now. I think state of New Jersey, what, is a C now? That was just hit the press. So, we are much pushing, and we are working on, I promise you. I promise you. And, thank you. And, thank you.
Good evening. Roger Lang, Sunrise Beach. Just had a couple of comments about the Mayon program. And whenever I hear that databases are being created, spent years in national security, it sort of makes me bristle a little bit, so I ask the questions. Who has this, this data that's being created for the individual students? And is one of those entities a commercial entity? How secure is this data? And when, if ever, will this data be purged? Or will this data follow the students for the rest of their lives?
So with regard to data following students for the rest of their lives, the New Jersey Department of Education, through the New Jersey SMART program, does exactly that. It tracks all of their data, everything from test scores to addresses, you know, and beyond. So the New Jersey Department of Education has that information, and that's all in a pipeline where the state of New Jersey has certain reporting requirements that they have to provide to the federal government. With regard to the Mayon program, so Mayon is certainly keeping the student's name. They put the student's name in. Could a student put a fictitional, you know, fictitious name in? You know, absolutely. And the records would also indicate the Lexile score. And I think that that was discussed earlier. So that if a student was at a certain Lexile score and they achieved a different number, that data would be in there. The number of books that the child read, and the books that the child read would be recorded. With regard to the purging of that and the timeliness of that, you know, I don't know. I have to look and get back in touch with you on that. And so there are lots of data systems that we have that keep student data. But that's all that Mayon would be keeping.
And these are somewhat umbrella questions for your move into distributing Chromebooks to all the students. These same set of questions apply. Databases, I mean, if the CIA and the IRS can't control their data, how's Lacy's school system going to do it? I'm assuming you have a program for data security. I'm just bringing it up as a concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Way in the back.
Gary Vaccaro, 116, Netherington Court. If you can't hear me, let me know. I've been accused of being a soft talker. I just want to address this fact sheet, or should I kind of call more of an interpretation sheet? One of the things is, and I've talked to the Township Committee about this, this 2% cap. This 2% cap is a myth. There's no such thing as a 2% cap because there's so many exclusions. Has anybody's taxes only gone up 2%? No, there's no such thing as a 2% cap. So to use a flawed law as a reason not to move the election is not what you should be doing. Again, there's no such thing as a 2% cap. Secondly, this item up here that talks about how the, how you can move an election is kind of misleading. I went to the New Jersey School Board, School Board Association. They have an FAQ that talks about the law, which is Public Law 211, Chapter 202. So if anybody wants to look at it. And I looked at the law and compared it to the FAQ where they match exactly. And there's a question. "Can a board or municipality switch back to April elections once it has made a change?" So let me read this. "Yes, once a district changes from April to November, the election must remain in November for four years, which you've done. Under the law, as it is written, after four years of conducting November elections, the election can be changed back to April through any of the same means by which it was moved, a resolution passed by the board or municipal governing body or through a voter question." When you have this item three here talking about a petition somewhere and leaves 15%, that's how a community would get the, a vote on the ballot.
Right, you have to read further down?
I did read further down, okay?
Because it goes into greater detail.
No, it talks about, where it talks about this 15% is when it talks about how can community members get the public question on the ballot? That's how a community would get the public question. But the township has already done that. So if the voters vote to approve, which I think we should move the, the, the election back to April, if they vote to move it, it gets moved. It doesn't need your vote, all right?
How it works is that the Township Committee can then decide to vote to move it back. It's a public referendum. And I provided my one copy to the expert who's here.
I looked at the law, and the law is very clear.
Well, you know what? I will tell you too. As a public member, you can probably call School Boards, New Jersey School Boards Association. All that information is taken from them. I provided my fact sheet.
I'm looking at the fact sheet right now. It's specifically what it says. And it said, and the law says the exact same thing. So if it's, if, if the vote is on, if, if November, if the people vote to, for a, to move the election, it's, it's binding. There is no 15% petition. It's binding. You don't need to vote on it. And that's what the law says.
No, and I, I disagree with your interpretations, but, but feel free to call them. New Jersey School Boards Association will take questions from the public.
So basically, what you're saying is that even if the vote is saying, "We want to move the election..."
No, no. What I'm saying is that if that's what the voters say, that the Township Committee then can take a vote and move it back, or we could take a vote and move it back. One thing it also says in the Q and A, the questions and answers, is that if we had voted to say we wanted to keep the election in April, that was merely a political vote and at the time when the law was passed, and that could not keep the election in April because the Township Committee could move it at any time.
We can go back and forth on this because I think it's pretty clear on the questions. The other thing I want to mention was we talked about the school rating D and all that, you know, and we can argue about whether or not it's line change, methodology change. But, you know, New Jersey Department of Education just did their own rating. And basically, our high school is, is lagging. It's not met target, targets for college and career readiness. As a parent of a seventh grader, I find that very upsetting. I don't think we can stick our heads in the sands with this. You know, I like a lot of parents who have seventh graders. We start thinking, gee, do I want to send my kid to Lacy High School? And that's a damn shame. Because for any, any parent, our, our high school should be our first choice where we want to send our kids. And for parents to have to make a decision that, "I want to use my, I have to use my college money to send my kid to high school," is not acceptable. So this is a rating that you have that we need to address. I'm not trying to insult the school or insult the staff. I'm trying, we're trying to make this better. So I, I say we can't stick our head in the sand, so we have to look at this, so.
Absolutely.
So I, I don't think it's a saying, methodology change, all that. That is, those are the facts.
No, and to that point, Dr. Brower can provide more information. Absolutely, we are looking at that and why that occurred.
Yeah, so you're referring to the New Jersey School Performance Report, which is a relatively new report. And many of the districts throughout New Jersey are extremely concerned about how college and career readiness is specifically identified as an indicator because what the Department of Education has done is made attendance the, one of the key components for determining if a school has students college and career ready. It's attendance related. So I would suggest to you, before you, I would, let me finish.
Wait, we just want to finish.
I would suggest, I understand that you're seeing that and it's a concern. I understand that. I would suggest, if you want to come in and talk with me, you're welcome to take, record the conversation. It's up to Mr. Fidney to do that. But I would ask you to come in and let's take a look at it because before you, you start to make judgment on that particular indicator, it's really good to know, it's really good to know what it is. And I would encourage you, it came up earlier. I'd encourage you to go back to the October 2014 presentation that I did on student achievement of the district and use that in conjunction and concert with the decision that you're going to make.
And I understand that, but the reality is, our SAT scores are lagging. And I know for a fact...
Please take a look at that report.
Can I finish, please?
Please take a look at the report.
And I know for a fact that when kids graduate school here, they go, go apply to colleges, our, our transcripts are not highly regarded as other schools. I know for a fact, okay, that we have honor students, that we are, say, honor students that have to take remedial English when they get, we're freshmen in college. The system is not working right. We can make excuses and say the methodology has changed, or they do it this way, or it's a new kind of test. That's what every other school has to perform against.
Have you seen the student achievement report? Have you, I'm just asking, I'm just regressed. Have you seen it?
And I have. It's very good at the lower levels.
Take a look, take a look at the...
What I want to say, just, the, wait, just, I just want to say, yes, we agree. We are always looking to achieve. We're always looking to improve. And, and I, you know, as a parent of high schoolers, yes, what can we do to make them better ready for college? I wish Mrs. McAvoy was here because she always has a wonderful report about how well our graduates are doing, but there is always room for improvement. There is always room for improvement.
Our great kids, there's nothing about the kids. It's the fact that as parents, we want the school to be, to be the best.
Yes, we do.
And when we see reports like that, those are, those are the facts. And to make excuses about it...
We're not making excuses. We want them, we want to improve it.
You know, I, it's, it's not acceptable.
I agree. It's not acceptable. We do want to improve it.
Everybody up here, sure, as a parent, as a board member, wants the school to do, do its best. And that's the school that we want to move into the town, so.
Absolutely.
The last thing I just want to mention is, I don't remember the woman's name. She mentioned about having a public comment at the end of the meeting, similar to what the Township Committee does. And I really think you should consider that. I think the public should have, should have a comment on the end to respond to your comments.
And I'm not sure how they do it over there. The reason why we do it here is so that the public can give us input before we vote. It's important for us to hear from you. Sometimes we table things based on the public input. Sometimes we change votes. But we want to hear from you guys before we vote. And that's why we do it that way.
And they, four or five years ago, they reversed it. They had public comment before the committee comments. I think the work to those, they changed that to public comments. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's another nice contribution.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Barry Bender, Historic Bay Avenue. I'm going to say things kind of straight. I'm not real happy with what my taxes have done. I've been here for 27 years. And I'm not real happy with my taxes, but I wanted to say, make a little comment about deferring school taxes, okay? The former, I don't know why he's gone. The former CFO of the municipality, in conversations that I had with him, said that "Deferring school taxes is a gimmick. It's not a good thing to do, okay? And you could end up hurting yourself with that." Now, I'm going to ask a question. You made a comment about a letter that's supposed to be coming from the Township Committee. When was that letter requested?
It was first requested, we had...
I requested it back in February.
In February. We had two meetings, and actually, Dr. Brower even wrote it for Mayor Quinn. It was confirmed that it was received at our early August meeting. So we're waiting for just a signature.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you point blank, as a taxpayer, and I'm going to say things straight. I know there's been a, a war going on, political war, and I'll say it that way, between the school board and the, and the Township Committee. I'm saying it straight. I've, I've seen it. I've been there, you know, I've been around here for a little while. That someone in an elected office would take a chance on hurting the, the rating of either the municipal government or the Board of Education, okay? And affecting the credit rating and how much you have to, you know, pay in interest on, on what you borrow to the taxpayers of this town is unforgivable, okay? So that letter should be here ASAP, okay? Because, I, I mean, I'll, I'll tell you point blank. I looked at my tax bills, and I'm not happy with my tax bills. And I know the majority of my taxes go to the school, and there's a reason for that. And that's all of New Jersey. It's the same everywhere in New Jersey, okay? But I looked at my tax bills, and I added up the numbers, and I looked at them. And over the past 12 years, my school taxes have gone up 48%, which I'm not real happy with. But my municipal taxes went up 260%, which is absolutely disgusting. And I'll leave you with that note. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good evening. My name's Mac Dolmetsky. I live at Arbor's Drive in Seabreeze. And as Ron said before, I guess there's an open invitation for us to talk to you about finances. But one of the big questions I have is, again, the increase in the tax and how it's affecting everybody in this township. Ron said, "We put so much money into the town, into the community." Well, I think it's going to have to be cut back in order to pay these taxes. Now, my question to the board is that I've done some calculations from your financial statements. And what happens is, for the past four years, except for the most recent year, is that you always did your calculations from the assessed valuations that are mirrored to the township. But this, usually it's around $4.2 billion. This year, what happens is, you're using, you're changing the method. You're using your calculations off this thing called an equalized municipal valuation, which is 3.7. Now, as a result, our taxes have gone up 15% on the township line, but your budget, according to everything that I read and everything that I see in the newspaper, only has gone up 2%. Now, because of this differential, it's going to give the school board $5.6 million in extra money. Why?
Well, it doesn't work that way, but I'm going to let the financial wizard here explain that.
The, what we did this year was, there was an assessment change of the township.
Oh, Mr. Savage.
There was, there was a revaluation done by the township. The, a penny prior to this year was, I think you said it right, $4 billion or $427...
$4.2 billion.
Right, which, which makes a penny about $427,000. The new assessment now is $3.3 billion, $770,000 off the top of my head, which makes a penny $377,000. Our taxes this year went up $940,000. If you take a penny of $377, it went up 2.2 cents. That's what we told the public when we introduced our budget, that our budget was going up 2.2 cents. That's why when we have this meeting, I'd love to sit down and go over it with you so that you could see the numbers. Because I'm not real sure where your numbers are coming from.
Well, they all come from, from your...
I think what you're doing is you're using the assessed value prior and the assessed value when it is now. And it's not apples to apples.
Yeah, because all the numbers that I've traced, they mirror what the township is reporting in terms of their assessed values.
I'd love to sit down and talk to you.
Okay, no, I will. And I just wanted to make that statement, and we will...
But if you, but if you take a look at our tax increase this year, it was $940,000.
Correct.
And a penny is $377,000. That's 2.2 cent increase. That's 2.2 cent increase.
All right. Well, it's a little confusing, and it's like...
I'll show it to you.
It's very confusing.
I always look at this as being a shell game.
Wait, 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 wait. We went from, we went from $1.73 to 1.94, right?
No, I'm sorry.
That's small percent increase.
That's because the assessed value changed.
Your value, the 3.7 value.
No, no, no. Break into...
Wait, wait, wait. We could just wait a second, let him finish, and let everybody else talk, and then we... I think we really need to sit down, because it is confusing. That's why I let him explain it, because I'm...
I would rather sit down and show you, you know, a piece of paper.
We look forward to that.
Okay. Yeah, because the big concern is, it's been consistently done for the last four years prior to the current year.
The reassessment.
And then, all of a sudden, the game changes.
It's easy to do, it's easy to do every year until you have a reevaluation. And then, in fact, I think way back when, we went, 20 years ago, we get a reval, the same thing had to happen.
All right, we'll meet with you.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Hi, Tom Kroll for Erie Way, Forked River. Just a matter of clarity, Mayor Quinn, I want to say about three months ago, during a Township Committee meeting, stated that the township lost $450 million in property value during this last reevaluation. What happens in that situation is, because the cost basis is not going to drop that much, they can't cut their budgets to that extent, the rates get raised on municipal and on the school board as well. So, while an individual property owner may not have lowered their value, your home may not have lost value, and hopefully, in a way, it didn't, because the township as a whole lost $450 million in property value, each entity then, their rates had to increase in order to adjust for that. So if a specific home did not lose value, their, their taxes went up a considerable amount of money to make up the difference for the homes that lost that part of the $450 million in property value. So, that is the big issue that, that's hit this township this year with this revaluation that people were not aware of, that we lost $450 million collectively in property values in this township, and that caused people in Seabreeze and in other areas of this town for their taxes to increase greatly. While some others may have gone down somewhat, I don't think that, you know, people saw 30 or 40% drops in their, their taxes, but, you know, as a whole, they may have lost, you know, $20,000, $30,000 in value, which might have been 10% in value, but when the rate goes back up, their, their taxes get stabilized, or maybe go down slightly, while every, while another, another group of people who have retained their value or were assessed, maybe even higher than they should have, but did not lose their, their assessed value while their taxes have gone up 10, 15, 20%.
Okay, um, we're just going to rate, we're speaking one at a time, just like in school. We need the school teachers up here to control this. Uh, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, no, that's really, that's really just a point of, of clarity as to why some people got a 15% increase, because your property values during this assessment did not go down, while, again, as a whole, the township, according to Mayor Quinn, went down.
Okay.
No, I'm not a realtor, actually.
Let's be, let's be respectful.
I'm just somebody who, who sat at the township meetings and have sat at the school board meetings and heard Mayor Quinn say, "We lost $450 million of property value during this last assessment," which caused rates to go up on both the school taxes and, and the, and the property tax, and, and the municipal tax.
Remember, this is not a debate, it's public comment, so let's be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, that, that, that's really a good point that he made, but...
But, um, sir, we just don't have debates here, maybe not like...
I understand, but, but we have, we have, we have the members of the public that made the effort to come out.
I know. No, I agree.
Here's a, here's a really key point. I'm a businessman.
Hey, why don't you come to the podium, sir? Thank you. Um, and the only reason is that we do still have to take significant votes on school business.
Yes.
So...
Oh, oh, you know, I, look, as a businessman, what do you do when you have a business? You could, your costs increase, you could raise prices. "Oh, but I'm competing with China, so I can't raise prices. What do I do? I cut costs." What I haven't heard here tonight is what austerity programs are in place. The enrollment is down, there's less children in school. Where's the austerity program? We don't, I don't know what the class size is, this is why we want to meet, we want to understand what's going on, but where are we cutting costs? Where's the township cutting costs? You know, I could sit there and say, "I ride behind a police station, and there's a stable full of police cars back there. Do we need all these police cars? Do we need all those trucks?" I'm a businessman, I got to cut costs, I can't raise prices. Here, in, in the government, is a growth industry, you just keep raising the price. We can't take it, that's the problem. It's unsustainable. It's all going to come down.
Thank you.
Gavin Rozzi, Barnigan Pines, Forked River. Two things. First, for the record, there was some back and forth about the Star Ledger report that was referenced. The actual article, I have it right here, "New Jersey's Top Performing Public High Schools," that was written by Frederick Keiman for the Star Ledger on NJ.com on August 19th, 2013. I've enlarged the chart. Lacy Patch High School...
So that was 2013, he said that, yeah.
They did, excuse me, let me just please finish.
Not in 2014.
This is the D-rating they gave, it was also reported by Lacy Patch, Lacy High School gets a D-rating. So there is the letter. That's just for the record, I don't want to engage in debate on that.
But that was 2013.
2014, he said, yeah, last year.
Yes, that was the, the letter rating they gave.
Last year, when did it go? In 2014, it went to a line, right?
Okay, let me just go to my second point of order here. I just have a few remarks to make in response to the display that occurred at the July Board meeting. Firstly, Board Policy Number 0168 states that the determination as to whether a recording device interferes with the conduct of a meeting is to be made by the presiding officer of the meeting, which would be the board president. What is clear is that this board is selectively enforcing this and other policies in an attempt to silence dissenting voices within our community, enforcing this policy in a manner that can only be described as arbitrary and capricious. There are numerous examples of multiple other publications that have taken pictures and/or videos of this board's public meetings, and for some reason, they have faced none of the hostility that was directed my way at the last meeting. They include the Asbury Park Press, and they're here tonight, the Lacy Patch, the Southern Ocean Times, NJ.com, and others. Another example of filming at board meetings without, to my knowledge, having been required to give notice, I have the exhibits all here, the LTEA Twitter account, they did post pictures of the meetings, and I don't believe they faced any of the same resistance, and on one case, Dr. Anthony did retweet one of those, but I'm not getting into debate on that. As such, I fail to see what the problem is with anybody taking pictures or video at an open public meeting, it doesn't really make sense to me. This has been something that's been going on, both for myself and from others, for multiple months now, and I can tell everybody here tonight, the ACLU of New Jersey, they are currently conducting a full review of Board Policy Number 0168. I spoke with them today, and a demand letter from them will be forthcoming. They told me that they have had great success enforcing local school districts to comply with the law voluntarily.
Gavin, just, just stop.
Excuse me, this is public comment, this is not a back and forth, it's not a debate.
I just was asking, you didn't stop taping, though. We didn't ask you to stop taping. You taped, right? We didn't ask you to stop, and we have never asked you to stop.
Mr. Rel, may I please finish my statement?
Okay, thank you.
You can respond to your board comments. That being said, in the Legislative Findings of the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 7, which this board is subject to, the intention of our elected New Jersey legislature does not mince words when they write, and I quote, "Secrecy in public affairs undermines the faith of the public in government and the public's effectiveness in fulfilling its role in a democratic society." In 2007, the New Jersey State Supreme Court upheld the intention of this law when a public body unlawfully denied a man his right to film the proceedings. In the case, captioned Taras versus Borough of Pine Hill, Chief Justice James R. Zalier wrote on behalf of the court, quote, "Arbitrary rules that curb the openness of public meetings are barricades against effective democracy. The use of modern technology to record and review the activities of public bodies should marshal pride in our open system of government, not muster suspicion against citizens who conduct the recording." The Chief Justice continued, quote, "Our conclusion is supported by an interwoven tapestry of jurisprudence and policy that demonstrates both the value of open government and the right to document governmental proceedings. After the questionable handling of the solar panel project, among other activities, public scrutiny of this board is more important now than ever before. Thus, Lacy Reporter's important work will continue. Since getting public records from this organization has been tantamount to pulling teeth, all documents that I obtained via Open Public Records Act requests will be posted free of charge for anyone to download, use, or make copies of as they see fit on a page known as the Vault, located on lacireporter.com." So in conclusion, I respectfully ask this board that if you're going to apply restrictions to filming, you apply this policy equally and fairly, and not turn policy into a tool for running political interference. Open government is good government, and as we have seen on multiple occasions, the cover-up is almost always worse than the crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, Gavin was here at the last meeting. I noticed that there was a video camera, he was videotaping. We never stopped him, we never enforced the policy, we have not sent him a letter asking him not to tape. He does tape. We do tape our own sessions, they're on the TV, ours are unedited, and that was the only point that was made, but nobody has asked him to stop taping, so we have no problem with that.
The board policy was written by a service that the school district uses for the creation of policies, for most of the policies that the board adopts, because it's a more efficient way to operate, and they, the case that Mr. Rozzi was referring to is specifically referenced within the policy. So, we believe that our policy, based upon the advice we've gotten from our vendor, is consistent with the State Supreme Court decision.
But just to clarify, he was not asked to stop taping, there was no letter sent to him, there was no enforcement of the policy. Just to clarify. So, anybody else want to speak? I see no other hands. I will close public comment, and we'll move on. Just what you want to do, hear some more from us, but you can hear from somebody else and not me. Committee reports. Mrs. Downing, do you have? Is the board in agreement to put off committee reports until next meeting since it is 10:10? Yes. Mr. Sine, I know you wanted to clarify something.
Yes. There was a comment made about, "All board members have the right to all information." That is not a correct statement of the law. By way of example, if a board member wants to see records involving a student matter that occurred six months ago, by law, they're not entitled to that. If a board member wants to see a matter involving a staff member, which is commonly known as a personnel matter, that happened perhaps six months ago, by law, by commissioner decision, commissioner of education decision, they're not allowed to do that, they're not allowed to see that. The board has a practice of whatever information is given to one board member is given to all board members, and that is a, a policy that has been assiduously followed. The, there was a comment made about the D-rating. I found that article, what was so peculiar about that article, a couple of things. Number one was, the author of the article refused to disclose the formula that he used in reaching his conclusions, but one of the things that he did say, as I recall it, was that it had to do with movement from one year to another year, which resulted in the peculiar conclusion that, for example, Southern Regional High School, and I'm not knocking Southern Regional High School, but Southern Regional High School, the year that he gave Lacy a D-rating, had SAT scores, which is one of the major measures of success by high school students, had SAT scores that were lower than Lacy's scores. Southern Regional got a grade of either B or A, and Lacy, with the grade that was higher in SAT than Southern Regional, got the D-rating. So I leave it to you to give whatever value you want to give to that kind of a rating system. Lastly, Mr. Vidnik made some suggestions, said, "I guess, number one, I'm too old because of my white hair, to function as the board lawyer, and I'm too old to work hard." But let me assure you, I'm not too old to work hard, and I work very hard. And let me also say to you that of the four school districts that Mr. Vidnik referenced, I did not seek a position with any one of those four school districts. Each of those four school districts came to me to represent them. The Central Regional School District that he referenced was involved in one of the most major school law decisions in the last two years in the state of New Jersey. It's an 87-page decision reported by the Superior Court of Pellet Division, and it's entitled, if anybody wants to go read the 87 pages, Seaside Park versus the Commissioner of Education and the Central Regional School District. I was the lead lawyer in that case for the defendants. Yes, it cost a lot of money to defend that case, but there was over $4 million in tax revenue at stake in that case in each and every year. That case has been going on for years, and as a result of the efforts that I put in, and my office put in, Central Regional has saved $40 million. That's a pretty good bang for your buck, it's a term I keep on hearing tonight. So, I didn't, never sought any of these positions, they came to me, I'm the only A-rated lawyer in this township, I'm the only A-rated lawyer, if you want to talk about ratings, I'm the only A-rated lawyer south of Toms River until you get to Atlantic City. Those are the facts. So I thank you for the opportunity to respond.
Thank you. Board comment. Mr. Giardano?
I knew you were going to pick one first. Thank you, President Terrell. You know, I, I think a lot of what we've been talking about tonight is interpretation of data, interpretation of finances, and, you know, you look at different data points, different data sets, and everybody can, can kind of come to their own conclusion, right? Two years ago, when I ran for this board, I ran under the platform of fiscal responsibility, and I think people in the, the public have to know that not one of us can make a decision about fiscal responsibility, it's a collective process. It's a process where we all work together, we all look at the numbers, we all interpret the numbers, and we all come up with what we think is the best possible outcome for the taxpayers and for the students. A lot of what we talked about tonight, talked about taxes, talked about budget, talked about solar panels, which we keep hearing about, really didn't delve too much into student achievement, and I thought that the, you know, the, the highlight of my night was seeing the literacy program and the opportunity that that brings to our students. And yeah, programs like that cost money, but when you're talking about bank for, bank for the buck, and ROI, and what is, how do you measure ROI in a school district? Is it where our kids go to college? Is it, you know, the jobs that they get once they're out of high school? Do they go into the service? Do they become productive members of the community? How do, how do you gauge ROI? It's kind of a, it's kind of a tricky thing, right? So, you know, you've, you've got this administration, you've got this superintendent, you've got this board that's trying to do the best that they can with the resources that we have. You know, we can't control what comes down to us from, from the state level. We can't control when, you know, the monies that we get from, from Trenton decrease. You know, you also look at test scores, and I think, you know, Art, Art just pointed it out in regards to that, how they measured that school rating. You know, a lot of it's based on, on socioeconomic circumstances as well, and, and, you know, what, what kids are afforded and how kids test, right? You know, are our teachers any better or any worse than the teachers in Southern? No, I think we have excellent teachers. You know, and, and there are the grumbling up there, you know what? We have highly trained professionals in this school district, and I'll stand behind that. And I think our administration in the school district does a great job. You know, I, I don't want to ramble on, but I, I do know that we do the, we do the best we can, and I think the fact that there's so many people out here tonight, now, I'll show hands, how many people out here actually have kids in the school district? Okay, not, not many, but, but a few, right? So, I commend you for coming out and, and taking the charge, and come to the board office and look at the numbers, and look at the finances, and talk with Mr. Savage, and, and really dig into how things are figured out. You know, for the parents that have kids in the school district, I'll, I'll get off my soapbox in a minute, but new, new school year's starting up in September. Kids are in school for several hours a day, and I'll say this, and I've said it in the past, education starts and ends in the home. We talked about reading tonight, we talked about literacy, and I think parents need to play a very proactive role in their child's education. It's not just send them to school, and what they learn there, they learn there. Be involved with what they're doing in school, be involved with what they're learning. Take advantage of the resources that the school puts forth in regards to online communication, look at the school website, know when certain meetings are coming up, know what block scheduling's all about, know about college prep, know when certain dates are and when, when certain activities are taking place, and be proactive. And I'll end my comments with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. DeSantis?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Terrell. I want to make sure I can be heard. Thank you to all the members of the public that are in attendance tonight. I know it's a late hour, and I'm glad to see that most of the people have still stayed. I'd like to mention the total cost this month for employee benefits was $1,216,038.32. It's on page... It's on page thirty-six of the agenda. That is one of our very, very largest bills. For the record, once again, we board members are unpaid volunteers. Please do not think for a moment that school board members collect paychecks, we do not. We are unpaid elected volunteers, not employees, and that is true throughout the state of New Jersey. We work hard for no money. I read everything that comes to us monthly in our packet. It takes a couple of days to read through everything. I don't know how my fellow board members with full-time jobs manage to do it. Also, we oversee this district, we are not involved in day-to-day operations. I don't know why people think we actually run the district. We oversee the operations, that is the function of a board. There is an excellent article online at the American School Board Journal titled "The Seven Signs of Effective School Board Members." I highly recommend it. Now I'd like to talk a little bit about Lacy Policy 0134, the annually required Board of Education self-evaluations. I am not at all in favor of abolishing the self-evaluations. It is a best practice recommended by the New Jersey School Board Association. We board members are sworn to uphold all policy, regulations, statutes, et cetera, and not change them to suit our whims. Abolishing a policy that's only been practiced once in ten years while on the books since 2005 is a pretty bad track record for a board with a sitting veteran member of over twenty years. Who should know better than all of us to follow policy and procedures? Mrs. Terrell has said she can't get anyone to comply with the BOE selfevals. I was very willing. I even asked the New Jersey School Board Association to let me try their online version to time it. It only takes about forty-five minutes. It's our job unless policy is changed, and that is what Mrs. Terrell is seeking to do now. Item H, page forty-four, attachment B1 of the agenda, abolish the annual requirement. Not a good idea in my opinion. I am requesting the revision, making the self-evaluation optional, be stricken from the agenda. This issue was discussed in my absence on July thirteenth at the policy meeting. The Strategic Planning Committee does not replace a board self-evaluation. I asked for eight years of previous board self-evaluations on January fifth, 2015, the day I took office. I thought these documents would help guide me with my new job. I was told later that day, there might only be one. So I said, okay, please find it for me and let me have a copy. I never received it. I had used an Oprah request form, but it was returned to me saying I didn't need to use them anymore. Then on June second, 2015, a neighbor of mine made the same exact request via Oprah. Lo and behold, he got a copy of what was the lone 2010-2011 BOE self-eval done for an NJ Cusek report. How come he got it and I couldn't? This document was supposedly written by then-board president, Linda Downing. It mentions nothing about how the board should improve student achievement. In fact, it's so brief, I'm going to read it for everyone. "Lacy Township Board of Education Self-Evaluation. I," presuming it's Mrs. Downing, "met with each of our board members in pairs, Bruce Carney and William Quist, Eric Schubiger and Robert LaRae, Maureen Terrell and Jack Martnett. I then met individually with Vanessa Clark, Assistant Superintendent, James Savage, Business Administrator Board Secretary, and Richard Staradup, Superintendent. After we reviewed the model given to us by New Jersey School Board Association," and I'm presuming that's the model self-eval, "our discussion following was most productive. After evaluating ourselves, we realized that we are indeed a good working board. We are a team, and though we may not always agree, we do agree to disagree. We have mutual respect for each other. And below all the areas we felt we could improve. One, our committees will endeavor to be more active in the coming year. Curriculum and building and grounds meet regularly while other committees meet on a need basis. Our administration does a very good job in keeping up informed. Since our self-evaluation, almost all of the committees have met to reexamine their purpose and goals. We as a board do not get to communicate with each other as we would like to share our thoughts and concerns. We are pressed for time in private session and must follow the law as to what we can talk about. The sunshine law restricts us from meeting to discuss business outside of the meeting place. More use of the committee process may allow us to discuss issues of interest. Item two, this was what I found most fascinating. The Finance Committee generally meets once a year around budget time. We may schedule interim meetings in conjunction with the superintendent and business administrator. Three, board meetings are conducted in a professional and efficient manner. Four, the board has confidence in the fiscal management and advice it receives from its business administrator. Five, the board has confidence in the educational curricular leadership it receives from the superintendent of schools. Six, the board has a good, open, and respectful relationship with the superintendent and district staff at large. Seven, the board encourages public input, is respectful of the input it receives from the public. Eight, it was suggested that we have a mentor assigned to new board members other than the Board of Education president. This exercise was well worth the time and effort. We look forward to another successful year. There was no date, no name, no signature, but I don't understand how my neighbor was able to get this, and I couldn't. Item two, as I said, was most interesting, and it states the Finance Committee only met once a year at budget time. The county superintendent told me years ago, the Finance Committee's supposed to meet monthly and review all bills, contracts, and expenditures. Clearly, this was not the case in Lacy. This document proved to me beyond reasonable doubt that this board was on autopilot for many years, allowing the administration to run the district with very little oversight by the seven elected officials. I have asked for any and all contracts listed on the Finance Committee meeting minutes. I have been told I am usurping the committee process when I ask to see them. It is my right, duty, and obligation to see anything I request, especially financial documents. If anything goes wrong with a contract, all seven of us suffer the consequences equally, not just the three Finance Committee members. Again, this past month, I asked for contracts on the Finance meeting minutes of August third. I was now asked, you don't trust the Finance Committee? And that is pretty much a hundred percent correct. I don't trust the Finance Committee, and I have nineteen point eight million reasons not to trust them after the Comptroller's alert published on March eleventh, 2014. The public has nineteen point eight million reasons not to trust a board with a lack of district oversight. I have a document right here that admits this board was not operating properly for many years, and I have to thank Dr. Anthony for changing that. Now, how am I breaching ethics? I am still a private citizen and a board member, in no way does that take away my freedom of speech. My Oprah requests are not board business. The real question is, why am I, as a public official, even needing to use Oprah requests? And Mrs. Terrell has asked me the following questions when I've attempted to ask records, to request records. Why do you want it? Why do you need it? And what is it going to tell you? Last month, she said I asked for records dating back to 2006. In the case of my request for the 2006 $26.8 million bond document I requested, I was examining the full debt of the district during budget preparation time. Everyone wanted me to be on board with raising the budget, and I said no, because the overall debt of this district exceeds half the operating budget. I don't like that. It's not prudent to be in such debt. And Mrs. Terrell thinks it's normal for the district to borrow, and it is, but Lacy has borrowed to excess in my opinion, and now the public is paying dearly for all of this I had read Legal Policy 0174 as my comment last month. The Policy Committee last month had discussed an issue as to who should contact the attorney, and it is limited, but there still seems to be a very large bill every month. Mrs. Terrell, on the record, I would like to repeat exactly what I told you the night you asked Shaun and I, did we want Mr. Stein to attend the LTEA negotiation sessions? Mr. Giordano had already responded yes, and I knew you were okay with it, and I said to you, it's your call, Maureen, not yes, because I knew you would do it anyway. I made a new dual request for legal records, both as a board member and a citizen on August third, with sixty-five pages long, very specific about which records I am seeking. No response to a phone call was received in a timely manner. By law, I should have been contacted on the eighth day and asked for more time. Instead, I received verbal information from the superintendent followed up by an email. Mr. Savage was supposed to respond, and then I finally got a letter Friday, August fourteenth, asking for more time until August twentieth. And due to the circumstances which occurred last meeting on Monday, July twentieth, Tuesday, July twenty-first, I filed Government Records Counsel complaint for Oprah's denial of access to the legal records I asked for June first. I was never contacted and asked to clarify my request, nor was it ever mentioned to me that my request was overbroad and general, as Mr. Stein had proclaimed in public last month. When I read the June 2015 legal bill, it seems Mr. Savage and Mr. Stein, with over twenty-eight years of experience, discussed my Oprah request more than fourteen times. So yes, you are going to see my name on the legal bill. And the best they could come up with was deny, records do not exist. The answer to my Government Records Counsel complaint arrived in my mail Friday, August fourteenth. Funny, it seems the records do exist. I will now be checking and verifying some of the information contained in that answer to my complaint. It is not a crime to seek public records. My reasons do not have to be made known, but now I'll tell the public exactly what I'm looking for on the November and December 2013 legal bills. In 2013, probably towards the end of the year, I had called the Comptroller's office to ask what was taking so long with the solar investigation, I believe it was initiated in 2011. I was finally told the investigation was completed, and that an alert would soon be published on the Comptroller's webpage titled "Reports and Press Releases" by the end of the year. So I started reviewing that page daily. And while waiting for the solar alert to appear, I read a report the Comptroller did about uniform allowances. One of the things I vote no on in the bills is uniform allowances. I don't believe in clothing allowances anymore, it's an antiquated benefit, if you want to call it that. There was also a report dated June 2013, an analysis of legal fees paid by New Jersey local governments, boards of education were included. This report was a spinoff from an investigation titled "State Comptroller Report Finds Local Governments Failing to Control Excessive and Improper Payments for Legal Services." So I read this report as well, and both were lengthy, but very interesting. I made the information in the Comptroller reports I read available to all board members. I've been told more than once that for not approving the bill, I could be brought up on ethics charges because it's my duty and obligation to pay the bills and obligations of the board. Mr. Schubiger, however, as you heard tonight, votes no on all the bills for the past several months, and I doubt very much he's been threatened with ethics charges. I have been saying no to the legal bills since March because I cannot follow the bill charges with what appears to be the block billing method. The public pays these bills, and we have a right to know how each dollar is spent and for what. While reading the November 2013 legal bills, certain entries did jump out at me, such as, November eighteenth, 2013, telephone conference with Architect's Office, then on November nineteenth, an entry reads conference with Mr. Staradup. I was very perplexed as to why the retired superintendent was going to be called. And then on November twelfth, twenty-first, again, conference with Mr. Staradup. November twenty-second, 2013, telephone conference with Architect, telephone conference with Mr. Staradup. The man was retired over two years, and Mr. Stein had to call him. Of course, I'm very intrigued. Then the following month, December 2013, on the seventeenth, the bill reads correspondence to J.D. Carrera. These entries jumped out at me. Again, on December eighteenth, correspondence to Mr. DeCarrera, followed by correspondence with Mr. DeCarrera. I'm very intrigued by these entries, and that is why I asked for these memos. On April twenty-ninth, I wrote Mrs. Terrell as a board member, asked for her instructions to have all record requests go through her, an email requesting the paperwork from these entries. I received a response back asking, did I want the records, no matter what the cost to the district? I wrote back confirming I wanted the DeCarrera correspondence. I never received anything, I never heard from anyone. On June first, hearing nothing about the results of my April twenty-ninth request, I attempted to ask for the records under Oprah. To the best of my knowledge, it was not a matter of pending litigation, so I wrote the request. And now we have the situation we have today because I was not given records in a timely manner as a public official. We are accountable to the public who elected us. The board president has refused to ask the district to publish our email addresses or make a page on the website for contacting the board. I inquired, and I was admonished. While we will bring your concerns to the administration, same as you can directly, it should be the public's choice who they wish to contact. Many other boards in the state of New Jersey have photos and contact pages for their boards. I still have people coming up to me saying, oh, you or Mrs. DeSensa? There's no photo of us, other than the one that appeared in the yearbooks. We are public officials, and we should be accessible and visible to the public. Years ago, a photo of the board used to appear on the website annually. I recall seeing it many times. Therefore, I will be hosting a Meet the School Board Member Night at the Lacy Library, Monday, September twenty-eighth, from six to eight p.m. I am also now requesting in public that the contact information for the board with photos be made available to the public on the school district website. It is now August, and I inquired about this earlier in the year. We are not allowed to meet in public with more than three of us, so if two other board members wish to join me on September twenty-eighth, please notify me in advance. And as for changing the school board election and budget vote, I will request an add-on tonight to restore power to the people. I want to make a motion to move the election back to April, and I hope someone will second the motion. If not, I will try again next month. I'm going to finish with that, but I am appalled when I hear teachers do not have enough calculators in all the math class, but this board miraculously finds funds year after year for legal fees, and we can't get tools in the classroom for the teachers' calculators. We are here to educate the students, we are here to follow the rules, regulation, and policy whether we like it or not. Please stay tuned and come back next month. Come back on September twenty-first, the third Monday of the month. Thank you very much for your quiet attention.
Mrs. Downing?
Okay. First of all, Mrs. DeSensa, yes, I did do the BOE self-evaluation, the board evaluation, and one of the areas was the finance, and yes, we did correct it after that evaluation. So just to accuse this board of not doing their job, that was one of the biggest outcomes of that self-evaluation, was to get those communities back and working. On a positive note, because I haven't heard too much of that tonight, I want to say good luck to all our staff, and I hope there's a great opening. The schools look ready, the students are starting, I get a little anxious, a lot of them are saying they don't want to go back, but, you know, I wish them a lot of luck and thank you all, administration, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, everyone that works in the district, thank you for getting our schools ready. I also want to take a moment and give my sincere condolences to Mr. Bidwell. He, his mom passed away. I want to say I'm sorry to him and his family, and also to a lifelong resident of Lacy, Mr. Parker. He was a great supporter of our schools, and his wife passed away, and I want to send a sincere condolences to him and his family. I want to welcome all our new staff members. We were honored tonight to get to meet a lot of them. Before our board meeting, we had a reception for them, and they're very excited and anxious to get started. I see Ms. Taylor left already, but I want to thank her and Mrs. Kilmary for presenting my on tonight. They did a great job presenting. I look very forward to meeting, and I hope, Mrs. Terrell, that I could be on that committee because I really look forward to working and working with you on a committee to meet and below everything that this district has to offer. And I guess that's it. Have a great what's left of the summer, and remember, school's starting, so watch when you're driving, especially during school zones, we don't want any bad accidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schubiger.
Thank you, Mrs. Terrell. First, I do want to send my condolences to both the Bidwell families and the Parker family because suffering those losses is really tough on a family, so my best wishes to the, to the Bidwells and to the Parkers. First of all, thank you all for attending tonight. This engagement is what we need here in this district. And there's a lot of faces out there, and forgive me, I'm embarrassed to say I haven't met a lot of you. I grew up in this town, I moved away a little bit to go to school, and I'm coming back and settle down with my family here, and I think it's a great town. But I'll be the first to say, not the first, it's been said, we can and need to do better in our town on many different levels. So I hope that the engagement here tonight travels to other buildings on other roads in our town where people are responsible for your tax dollar as well, because we're all in it together. We're certainly a part of the issue. I can tell you this, we don't always have the right answers. We're not maybe the most intelligent people in the world, but I think we're a pretty good group, and our hearts are in the right place. We feel that the education, as many of you do, is really the foundation of a good community and ultimately of a good society. and ultimately of a good society. So sometimes getting from point A to point B can be a rocky road, and almost thirteen years, there have been some rocky roads for me. But I appreciate the fact that I have an opportunity to affect change in our town. The election change and student achievement, two issues that came up a lot tonight. I can tell you that not only am I okay, or do I support, public input and the ability to vote on the school district budget, and I'm not gonna talk about, I don't care if it's in January, or March, or July, or September, or November, or whatever, but I think we all have the right to vote on any portion of our tax bill. Now, I haven't heard anywhere else that any of the other taxing entities are throwing themselves out there and saying, please vote on our taxes and our tax levy. I hope they join us as we discuss this issue. There are a lot of factors that go into it. It's sort of interesting that while we're talking about saving tax dollars, it is gonna be an expenditure. Now, compared to our overall budget, no, it's not a huge expenditure, and will pay us back down the road perhaps, but between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars, nothing to sneeze at, so I think it's important that we all take a look at it. I see a lot of professional, educated, and smart people out in the audience here tonight, so when I say this, please don't be misguided in my intent, but I kinda wanna explain a little bit. I think most of us realize that your tax bill, you can really look at it as a big pie chart. And sometimes entities like the school district or municipality send out just that, a pie chart, to show where your tax dollars go. And it's no question, not even close, the school district is the biggest part of that pie chart. We're not denying that. What we're here to discuss is how do we stabilize that in the best manner while still providing a great education? And before anyone says, I'm making an excuse, this is not an excuse. I wanna tell you what that pie chart looks like. We are the biggest part, well over sixty percent. But I have to say, everyone's involved in this, and I want everyone to look at all the other pieces of the chart, your county tax, your open space tax, your library tax, your local, your county open space, and the school district. Because we are the largest piece of your tax bill and my tax bill, I understand why you're all here and you want us to affect change. I get it. But when you do look at the percentage of your tax levy, how it's changed over the past eight years, I'll use eight years because those are the numbers that I have and I checked today, and somebody up here before mentioned it. These are the numbers I have. If you take what the tax levy was, what was actually charged to your tax bill, what you paid on as a resident for the school district portion of your taxes in two thousand seven, and then you relate it to what it is today, what your tax levy, not the whole budget, because as many of you know, there's state aid, there's a number, a host of different revenues that go into what the whole budget is, but what is charged against you, the school district budget over that eight-year period, through an economic, whatever you wanna call it, crisis, recession that we're still kinda dealing with, seventeen percent. And you know what? It's not good enough. I wish we could've done better. Seventeen percent. So whatever you think of that, I understand, it's always, any percentage is too much. Your municipal tax levy over that same time period, that same eight-year period, a hundred and twenty-two percent, charged against what you're actually paying, not the budgets, again, just to be a little redundant, but the percentage of that municipal levy more than doubled in just eight years. And I'm sure there's a host of reasons why that happened, and I hope that they can explain it to all of us. If anybody in this room, or anyone watching on TV, would love, I would love for you to go find out why, and come back and tell us, so we can share in all this together, because it's not one taxing entity, it's not any of our faults individually for where we are today in Lacy Township, or for that matter, anywhere else in the state of New Jersey. So while I understand I paid the taxes, too, mine went up, and I want them to go down just like everybody else, we're trying our best to stabilize seventeen percent over an eight-year period for a school district, not bad, certainly could be better, but I wanted to give you a little bit of comparison when you're thinking about that pie chart that we call our tax bill. One other issue, I hate to see any of our professionals have to defend themselves here at our meetings. And at this point, we have people who have served this district for many years, they're not entry-level positions, they're high-level positions, and I think if you check the report cards, the real ones, not the ones in the blogs or the newspapers, you'll see that our administrative costs are pretty low in Lacy Township. And we can go over those numbers when we meet, I look forward to that. But we have people who are making very good money when you compare it to what other people are making around us, and I think they'd be the first to stand up and say that. But for any of them to have to defend what they make or how good they are at their job, it's a little tough to listen to as someone who's worked with them for a long time. So, you know, no matter how old they are or what color their hair is, if they're doing their job here, and I feel that I'm confident in what they're doing, I'm just fine with them, and I appreciate our staff and what they're doing. So please, continue to come. I gotta tell you, for a room full of people who are upset about their tax bill, all in all, I felt this meeting tonight, it's pulled to eleven, not bad at all, and I appreciate that, because I've been at some meetings, we don't get anything done, and we don't hear a thing from anybody because everyone's bickering for two hours. So when we interject and say, please, just wait, and then you can go up to the, we do that not because we don't wanna hear you, we do that because we wanna keep that level of civility up here as best as possible. And I think we did that pretty well tonight. So keep coming, but please also talk to those other taxing entities that are affecting your tax bill and find out why, for whatever reason, the percentage of their tax levy has gone up a lot more than ours, because I'd like to find out, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to also extend my condolences to the Bidwell family, to the Parker family, and also to the Bidnick family. Even when we're adults, it's hard to lose a parent, and I know I've gone through my own struggles in regard to that issue, and so it's always difficult. So our condolences go out to all of you. I'm not sure, and if you see the township, I mean, if you see the board meetings, for some reason, Mrs. DeSenza tends to blame me for a lot of things, and I just need to clarify, which is not any what I like to do during comment time, but I feel like I need to provide my recollection of information. I'm not sure why she believes I have any more power. She knows, she's gone through school board training, I have no more power than any other board member. The reason why, like with any group, there is a president, is to coordinate. So it's not like the mayor, I'm not the mayor. Basically, it's just a coordination, we do that, give example for attorney purposes. If the board wants to have contact with the attorney, they contact the board president, and it's basically a quality control, it's required by our policy. So that's why. Sometimes in some of the information that she wanted, that does go back a significant amount of years, I understand that it will create a lot of work for our administration in the spring, we're going through the budget process, I spoke to her on a regular basis, I asked if it could wait, because I know she was asking for things that I didn't even know were in the board office, or at the attorney's office, or where. As the board president, I don't keep any records. She's aware of that. So we had regular discussions about that timeline, and I thought that everything was fine until May, when she publicly ridiculed me. So I just asked that we continue to talk and be civil. Many times, I'm hearing her complaints for the first time during public comment, I'm not sure why that is, and we can continue to work on better communications, because we need to do that for this community, and that's what's important. In regard to the Policy Committee meeting, Mrs. DeSenza was, I believe, on vacation at the time, so the alternate did sit in, so it was myself, Donna McAvoy, and Dave Bidwell. It was brought to our attention that there's a policy in regard to the self-evaluation that's no longer required under the law, so we took it out because it's not required under the law. It doesn't stop us from doing self-board evaluation. I'm more than happy to do that, we can do that. I did also say that to Mrs. DeSenza, I said to her, I'd be more than happy to do it, I'd be more than happy to allow you to chair that, coordinate it, and I asked her to speak to the other board members. So I'm more than happy to record our conversations as we move forward, just so there's no misunderstanding. I'm not exactly sure why I continue to be perverted. I do not withhold anything from her in regard to the negotiation team for the teachers' contract, the chair is Sean Giordano, and Mrs. DeSenza sits on the team. I am there, not usually in the room, but as support. I'm the only one on this board that's negotiated contracts three times. The other board members have not. It's not unusual to have an attorney in the room, the union has a highly trained representative helping them negotiate. So that was a discussion that was had between board members, did they want Mr. Stein in the room or not? It was their decision to make. And I would hope that Mr. Giordano would back me up on that. I suggested to them that that service is available, but it's their decision to make. So Mr. Stein did provide, at the beginning, much support for the negotiating team, and at this time, they feel they don't need him in the room, so that is fine. And that's another way that we're looking to cut costs. So yet again, I have no power than any other board member, I have no documents. And in regard to what she may have found on attorney bills from two thousand and thirteen, in regard to the solar panel, Mr. Sardup was the superintendent at the time that the solar panel project was put into place, so I can only guess that's why, that he might have been reached out to. But everything is done in public, we have committee meetings, we try to have them every week. There's three people sit on the committee for sunshine law purposes, you can only have three, you can't have more. We try, I try very hard to conduct the business of the board, to help coordinate it, I'm not the chair of every committee, everybody has a role to play, and the only way we can move forward and provide good service to this community is if we put whatever differences are aside and work together for the benefit of the community and not whatever personal agendas there are. But more importantly, we need to talk about why we're here. And yet again, we're here for the educational welfare of our children, that's why we're here. So I'm very excited about the schools opening, the library, thank goodness for the donation from the Howsworth family for that, we couldn't have done it without it, but you have to see the library. We have to figure out a way to get our community back into our schools so you can see what your taxpayers' dollars are paying for. When I go to back-to-school night, I am amazed by our teachers, I am amazed by our wonderful labs, I'm amazed at the education we're bringing to our children, and so we need to make sure, we need to do a better job to make sure you guys get to see, because it's your contributions that make this happen. So we will put together a committee, and there's so many different ways we can do that. So I thank you for all hanging in there, it's a very long night, and we will move forward with board business, because we just only began, so please bear with us. We're looking at page forty. I'm seeking a motion on A through C.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
No on A and B and yes on C.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Do I have a motion to table D?
I will make the motion to table I and D, the professional services contracts.
Thank you, and do I have a second? I second that? Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Motion to table, yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, and for the benefit of the public, we just need to do a little bit more legwork on all of those. In regard to, now we're at page forty-three, if my eyes don't fail me, and it is, I'm asking for a motion for E through J. And J takes us to page forty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes on all except H, I. V. oh-one-three-four.
What did you wanna do on that one?
That's not, it was yes on all except for that one.
Is that a no or an extension on that?
It's a no on V. oh-one-three-four, H. V. oh-one-three-four, all the rest, yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Turning to page forty-six, I'll try to do this quickly, we'd like to read the donations under A. Children's books that were donated from Ryan and Stephanie Rush to Forkett River School in the value of eighty-one dollars. The flute music stand and recorder by the Marine family, again, thank you, sir, to the Forkett River School in the amount of three hundred dollars. Some games that were donated by Ann Elmer to the Forkett River School in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. Small American flags provided by Home Depot of Lacy to the Forkett River School, and that was a donation of four hundred and fifty dollars. Fishing equipment that was donated by Carl and Ann Kleiner to the high school, and the donation amount was seventy-five dollars. And a donation check to the high school media center provided by Richard and Margaret Howsworth in the amount of five thousand dollars. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Second? I second. I apologize, Mr. Giordano seconded?
Mr. Schubiger.
Oh, Mr. Schubiger?
Thank you, sir.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes, and thank you very much.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, and thank you. On page forty-six, item A, do I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, on page forty-seven, do I have a motion for Professional Days A?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. And in regard to the next section, which is Certified Staff, do I have a motion for A through J, J being the... Okay, let me just clarify that. So that would be A through I, do I have a motion in regard to A through I?
Move.
Is it J to get on?
Well, we're gonna, we'll handle that separately.
Gonna do that separately.
Yeah. Is that okay?
Second.
Thank you, roll call.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Thank you.
Schubiger.
Thank you. Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes, and I apologize to the public, but I am asking a motion for an add-on, which would be J, and its dates, a motion moved that the board approved the following employment of administrative personnel, and it's the appointment of Robert Dougherty, principal, who's replacing Dr. Kopeck, who left our district. The effective date would be August first, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion?
I'd love to make that motion.
And...
Second.
Or second it for that.
I'll second.
Whichever works for you.
You, maybe you make the motion, I'll second.
Oh, can I just clarify that? The motion that we're approving the following employment of Mr. Dougherty, the board's already appointed. This is a salary. This is a salary.
This is just salary?
Yes.
And just to clarify, the last board meeting, we voted to appoint him, but the salary has not been finalized. Thank you. Correct? So given that...
I'd still, I'd still make that motion, thanks.
Mrs. Downing, still second?
I'll second, I've corrected.
No questions.
I think you have a...
You have questions.
Earlier, you said today that the reason that you have the public speaking prior to so that you can see what's on the agenda and ask you questions, now you're adding on to the agenda, the public doesn't have the right to question, and I have no problem with you appointing gentlemen, because I read the July twenty thing, but it says salary should be determined, and I didn't hear a salary...
Oh, I apologize. A hundred and ten thousand dollars and, well, it's a hundred and ten thousand, five hundred dollars. And that is for the building principal of Mill Pond School, which is our second biggest school in our district.
May I address you from here?
Well, just... Um, well, just, let me...
You said the purpose of public...
No, no, and I understand. And let Dr. Anthony address that. And I apologize, sometimes we do have add-ons, but...
Sir, and as you know, there is a private session where we do discuss personnel. And I'm certain, as you would know, there are many times that the board needs to make some deliberations. And the board would come out of private session and make a recommendation, which is what they're doing right now. And that happens.
I am fully aware of procedure. And that's why when I was on board, we used to have a public conference meeting. And not hearing a salary and not knowing, and again, so I guess gentlemen, I know a lot of time. However, we do have parliamentary procedure, we're supposed to be transparent, and...
Well, and I apologize in the...
What else did you tell? Is there anything else you want to know about that motion?
Well, I usually, I'm going back a while, but I thought these were salary ranges for contracts. That, what is, is this a position that has a starting salary and a maximum salary?
No, it's administrator.
Principal.
It's a principal.
No salary guide?
I have a salary guide on...
Correct.
I wanted to clarify, because like I said, without a salary, that's...
And I apologize, in the future, normally what we do is when we have an add-on, because sometimes we find a mistake or there's an add-on, we have copies for the public. So I do apologize, that's not our normal course, to not have copies for the public. But, so, no, I apologize.
When possible, we do do that, when possible. When possible.
So I apologize. Do we know where we are in this motion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes.
Are you voting?
On the vote?
Yes, we're voting.
I'm sorry, it's a no.
Mr. Giordano.
Staying.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubaker.
Yes, congratulations and best of luck in your position.
Mrs. Trelle.
Yes. And welcome aboard. In regard to... Thank you, 48. Support non-certified staff personnel. Do I have a motion for A through E? Do I have a second?
Second. Second, please.
Roll call.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes on all, abstain on E, and it's not for conflict.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubaker.
Yes.
Mrs. Trelle.
Yes. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, I have an add-on. I would like to make a motion to restore the budget and board vote to the third Tuesday in April.
That wasn't provided to us, but is there a second?
I'll second.
I don't know that, I don't know that you can designate it as the first Tuesday.
Third, third, I didn't say first, third. Whatever it used to be, I believe it was the third Tuesday, and then the following Monday would be the meeting.
And so you're saying for what year? This has not been provided to us. I don't even have a written copy.
Well, it's been discussed, and I would like to make the motion to restore the budget and board vote to the third Tuesday in April. We don't know a year, it's to be determined?
I don't know if we can even do that. Because, in other words, and I understand your, I understand that this is what you would like. Here's the only problem. And if you look at the fact sheet, it's only because we don't know what year. If we were to vote on that, we don't know what year we can do that.
That's okay. Wouldn't the motion still stand?
I don't believe that it would be effective, because it would have no date, but...
We need to clarify exactly what motion she's making, the exact language. And then we vote on the exact language of the motion. And all we, what we do is vote, am I right, Mr. Stein?
And if we need a year, we need a year. I know...
I'm sorry.
Can you just be clear with exactly what the motion is?
Yes, if we need a year, we need a year. If it gets voted down, fine, we'll vote on it again some other time. But I would like to make a motion tonight to restore the budget and board vote to the third Tuesday in April.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
All right, I have it as motion to move the election to the third Tuesday in April. Does that sound correct, or are we...
It's close enough, and I can pass down what I wrote, but to restore...
You said it's close enough.
Yeah, year to be determined.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.